Good evening. This is Chairwoman Makita Scott. I now reconvene the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for Tuesday, August 24, 2021. I invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag to be led by Mr. Thomas. We will then have a moment of silence in recognition of those who have served education in Baltimore County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Tonight's Board of Education meeting is being held both in person and by phone by board members and streamed online through Microsoft Teams and broadcasted through BCPSTV, Comcast Xfinity Channel 73, Verizon Files Channel 34. In order to efficiently conduct this meeting, all voting items this evening will be done by roll call vote. The first item on the agenda is the consideration of the August 24th agenda. Dr. Williams, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
I am not aware of any additions or changes to tonight's agenda.
Ms. Scott, I have a motion.
Yes, Ms. Mack.
I move to add a discussion on the opening of schools as the item immediately following item N on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, so it was moved and seconded. Could you repeat that motion, please, because I don't see it if I or email it so that I can have it?
I move to add a discussion on the opening of schools as the item immediately following item N on the agenda.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded. However, I'm not sure if it's a proper motion to bring to the floor because item N is on the opening of schools.
May I speak to my motion?
Yes, please.
Item N has only allotted 10 minutes. If each board member asks two minutes of questions, that would be 24 minutes. And I know that the board had held a special meeting on August 3 to discuss issues related to the opening of schools. However, since that time, Baltimore County's seven-day average for new COVID cases has increased by almost 380% since the start of the month, and today, the county executive declared a state of emergency. So I think our students are returning to buildings next week, and I think we need to have a robust discussion tonight.
So you are correct. We did have a robust discussion on August 3, which was the reason why we had that, so the board members could actually come and talk and ask questions. And we've been given updates, and we're going to get an update, the third update, actually, of the opening of schools. So I don't understand why we would have a redundant motion that would come to the floor when, Dr. Williams, if I may ask, are some of the things that Ms. Mack just brought up already going to be discussed in the opening of schools? That's already on the agenda?
Well, without knowing exactly what questions board members have, especially Ms. Mack, the intent was to provide some additional information as we did with update two and our first update. So there may be some time to respond to questions. But again, not knowing the specifics, it is our plan to provide the most current information that we have at this time.
Okay. Let's take a vote. Ms. Go-- oh, yes, you had a question, Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, wouldn't it be better just to add more time to the new business section, letter N, instead of?
As long-- I don't care how we do it, as long as board members have an opportunity to ask questions that we are being asked that we have ourselves.
That's why we had the meeting on August 3.
Oh, and, Dr. Williams, how long were your presentation last?
10 minutes.
10 minutes for the presentation? So how long for-- so there wouldn't be any time for board questions, then?
That's why I made the motion.
Yeah, okay, so I guess I'm in support of the motion.
Let me actually-- no, let me ask you something. The whole time allotted is 10 minutes. Forgive me for that. How long is your presentation approximately of those 10 minutes?
I'm able to shorten my presentation just to entertain the questions, but I believe in some of what I'm sharing. Based on feedback I've heard from board members, I incorporate it in my presentation. So again, without knowing the specificity, I've talked to several board members. I incorporated some of their questions in the presentation, but if there's some additional questions, we'll be happy to entertain them and try to respond appropriately.
My only concern is that you shortening your presentation means I'd rather hear more from the system as to what you all are doing and what's being accomplished as opposed to just questions from board members, because those questions can be asked and answered through email.
Ms. Scott, I'd like to call the question.
Excuse me, I was talking, but I would rather hear from the system. So Ms. Gover, if we could take a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
May I speak to the question since I seconded it?
The question has been called. Ms. Gover, please go ahead. We're voting on the calling of the question.
Ms. Causy?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Jost?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Paster?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Q?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. I'm sorry, did you get Ms. Rowe?
Ms. Rowe was first.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the question was called. So now we're voting on the motion, and the motion, which was moved by Ms. Mack, is I move to add a discussion on the reopening of schools as the item immediately following item N on the agenda, and it was seconded by Ms. Hen. Thank you for that. If we could do a roll call vote on that?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causy?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Jost?
No.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
No.
Ms. Paster?
No.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Q?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Favor is eight.
Okay, so the motion carries. Okay. Okay, so the motion, and I have the language here, has been added, and she asked for it to be added after item N, as in Nancy. There you go.
Chair Scott, point of clarification, please.
Yes. Ms. Jost?
Since the motion was added and we are discussing agenda item N, which is opening, there's no time allocation for her item either, so it's kind of redundant at this point because it could easily be two minutes. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the revised agenda motion has been processed. The revised agenda is approved. All right. Earlier this evening, the board met in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act for the following reasons: to, one, discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals; and, nine, conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to the negotiations. The minutes of the closed session and informal summary can be found on Board Docs under this board meeting agenda date. The next item on the agenda is personnel matters, and for that, I call on Ms. Anderson.
Madam Chair, I would like to welcome our new Chief of HR, Ms. Anderson, and joining her this evening is Maria Lowry to do the report.
Welcome, thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman Scott, Vice Chairwoman Hen, Superintendent Williams, and members of the board. I would like the board's consent for the following personnel matters: terminations, retirements, resignations, and Central Area Advisory Council appointments.
Do I have a motion to approve the personnel matters as presented in Exhibits D-1 through D-4?
So moved, Mack.
Second, Ms. Causy.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Gover-- oh, excuse me, yes, Mr. Thomas.
I would just like to say that I'm glad that a student member has joined or is possibly being appointed to join the Delaney High School-- from Delaney High School, the Central Area Advisory Council.
Thank you.
Ditto.
Thank you. Ms. Gover, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causy?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Jost?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Paster?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Q?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is administrative appointments, and for that, I call on Dr. Williams.
Madam Chair and members of the board, I'm bringing forward the following administrative appointments for your approval. There are five: Director of Communications, Department of Communications and Community Outreach; Assistant Principal, Pikeville Middle School; Assistant Principal, Red House Run Elementary School; Senior Operations Supervisor, Building Security and Life Safety; Office of Facilities Support and Assistant Manager, Facilities Maintenance; Office of Facilities Support Services.
Do I have a motion to approve the administrative appointments as presented in Exhibit E1?
So moved, Ms. Paster.
Do I have a second?
Second, Offerman.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causy?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Jost?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Paster?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Q?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Dr. Williams?
Our appointments are in alphabetical order. We have David W. Glassman as the Assistant Manager in Facilities Maintenance in the Office of Facilities Support Services and Maintenance. He brings to us 15.6 years of experience in Baltimore County. Congratulations, Mr. Glassman. Our next appointment is Anthony W. Jackson as Assistant Principal at Pikeville Middle School. He brings 22.1 years of service in Baltimore County. Congratulations, Anthony W. Jackson. Next, we have Patrick B. Jenkins, Senior Operations Supervisor, Building Security and Life Safety, Office of Facilities Support Maintenance, Facilities Support Services and Maintenance. He brings 6.5 years of experience in Baltimore County. Congratulations, Mr. Jenkins. New to Baltimore County Public School is Ashley N. Manger as Assistant Principal of Red House Run Elementary School. She's coming from Hartford County Public Schools, where she has served as a classroom teacher for over 11 years. Congratulations, Ms. Manger. And our last candidate, we want to welcome her to Team BCPS, Boinde Onajala, as the Director of Communications in the Department of Communication and Community Outreach. She brings 11 years of experience from Montgomery County as well as the Community Bridges Incorporated. So we welcome Ms. Onajala. That's it.
Thank you, and welcome to everyone. Our next item is public comment. This is one of the opportunities the board provides to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. The members of the board appreciate hearing from interested citizens. As appropriate, we will refer your concerns to the superintendent for follow-up by his staff. The board will conduct the public comment portion of the meeting by allowing those who register to speak to attend in person. Registration was open to the public one week prior to tonight's board meeting and was closed at 3:00 PM yesterday for anyone wishing to speak at this evening's meeting. Board practice limits to 10, the number of speakers at a regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers were selected randomly using an electronic selection process from all registrations received within the designated timeframe. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Of course, if fewer than 10 registrations are received, all who registered will be permitted to speak. However, no speaker substitutions will be allowed. While we encourage public input on policy, programs, and practices within the purview of this board and the school system, this is not the proper forum to address specific student or employee matters or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. We encourage everyone to utilize existing dispute resolution processes as appropriate. I remind everyone that inappropriate personal remarks or other behavior that disrupts or interferes with the conduct of this meeting are out of order. I ask speakers to observe the three-minute clock, which will let you know when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks when you hear the tone or see that time has expired. The microphone will be turned off at the end of your time, and it could be turned off if a speaker addresses specific student or employee matters or is commenting on matters not related to public education in Baltimore County. If not selected, the public may submit their comments to the board members via email at More information is provided on the board's website at bcps.org under Board of Education, Participation by the Public. It is the practice of this board to allow elected officials to provide their comments to the board, so the first to speak is Senator Charles Sitner.
Good evening, Superintendent Williams, Chair Scott, and all board members. Before I get into my testimony, I want to wish everyone, our staff, teachers, and students a safe and successful school year. As some of you know, I have three daughters that attend this school system. My wife and I, we've done a pretty good job of keeping them COVID-free, so when they begin, when they attend school next, beginning next week, I'm just hoping and praying that that stays the same. So I do thank you all for ensuring that we're going to be wearing masks going into this. With that, the responses captured and documented by Canon Design within the final recommendations captures the best of Baltimore County. It demonstrates that the county's stakeholders care about equity throughout the entire county and that stakeholders' desire that students' needs are met countywide. This is apparent when you review stakeholder responses and the indicated in the results compiled by Canon Design. The data presented clearly states that 27% of the respondents agree and 64% strongly agree that resources should be allocated to benefit as many students as possible. In other words, 91% of the respondents agree or strongly agree that we have a capital plan to benefit all in our communities. Additionally, when asked what the longest that students should go without major building renovations in anticipation of receiving a replacement school, the majority of respondents, 49% of those respondents thought that five years should be the ceiling, and 22% responded 10 years should be the ceiling. To be clear, 71% of our respondents suggested a timeframe not to exceed 10 years. 10% of the respondents believe 15 years was the right time period, so a vast majority, we're talking about 82% of the respondents, preferred a timeframe of no more than 15 years. Also worth noting, a substantial majority of the respondents, 91%, felt that every student should have a seat inside of a building, not in a relocatable classroom or modular buildings, but a permanent structure. Now, why does this matter? While the study paints a compelling picture demonstrating that Baltimore County's needs outweigh current capital improvement plan budget options, it also paints a picture that this county's stakeholders want to ensure our children's needs throughout the whole county are addressed equitably. The July 13 presentation persuades me to unequivocally support the MIAPAS recommendations. The recommendations wisely put forth a capital improvement plan that provides a long-range capital roadmap for all 170 Baltimore County public school campuses. The recommendations allow us to stay in budget while addressing the assessed capital needs of each campus and provides an equitable distribution of resources within a reasonable timetable, accomplishing each capital improvement need within 15 years. That's predictable and data-driven while maximizing state funding that's available to our schools. That is a win for everyone. MIAPAS recommendations, if enacted, would produce the greatest benefit for the greatest number of people throughout Baltimore County for decades to come. I have at least 17 schools whose capital needs would be changed or deferred if the board were to accept the trade-off and ignore the MIAPAS recommendations. So I urge you to stick with the recommendations that came. I'll be sure to make certain that I email my statements tonight for your own records. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Delegate Eric Ebersol.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I want to commend all of you for your service. My goodness. People take these jobs and look for these jobs because they want to do good, and you do it for what could only be called a modest stipend at best. And I know that the reason you're here is because you want to do what is best for the students of Baltimore County, and I commend you for that. The greater good of the students is the most important thing. Now, many would say that your job is to be looking out for the greater good of their education, and it certainly is, but that's not all. Their health is at stake, too. Each day they go to school, you worry about their health and their safety. And to that end, I am grateful for your continuing willingness to pivot and be flexible in the face of COVID to make the best decisions in the interest of the health of our students. And that includes, because I know there's been a great deal of pushback on you on this, the idea of requiring masks in your schools. This is an easy one. You know this, I don't need to tell you, but it needs to be said publicly. Masks are inexpensive and effective in controlling the spread of COVID. And we need to, if we have the run-up that we're having right now with COVID, we need to respond to it, and you are doing that. And so I'm here to affirm your decisions, not to tell you you've made the wrong one for certain. You'll hear people talk about trauma. I have a kindergartner who attends Baltimore County Public Schools. He is so used to wearing a mask that in any setting, I can ask him to put on his mask, and he does it without any trauma. It's like putting on a seatbelt to him. It's the thing he does that he's told to do to keep himself and others safe. The kind of trauma I worry about is the trauma of seeing the student next to you in school out for two weeks as they have COVID, or seeing a school possibly shut down because of an outbreak, or having a family member sick with COVID and possibly feeling, because you're a pretty smart student, that you might have brought it home from school. Masks will protect us against that. I stop at stoplights. I stopped at several when I drove here today. I do it for two reasons. One, I feel like running through the stoplight might endanger my safety and my life. It might also endanger the safety or lives of other people. Masks in school are our COVID stoplight, and I encourage you to continue to be vigilant. Now, very soon, we're going to have vaccines that are approved for students. We already have 16- to 18-year-olds in our schools that could get vaccines now that are fully approved by the FDA. I expect that to go further. Now, it's not finally your decision. Health departments at the state level or the county level will have to recommend that students be vaccinated or receive a vaccine before they come to school. But when that time comes, and I predict it will be soon, I would very much hope that you would erect yet another stoplight for COVID by following that guidance and asking that, not asking, but requiring that all students be vaccinated before they come to a school building. There's precedent for this. It's not a new concept, and we have a particularly dangerous health condition. So give that consideration, but keep up the good work. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. So I now call on our stakeholder group leaders to speak, and our first speaker is Dr. Bash Faroon. And he's with the Central Area Education Advisory Council.
10 seconds. Good evening to all. The Central Area does not support the MIAPAS reduction in scope for Towson and Delaney. The Board of Education has approved a new building for the two schools, I recall, in 2017. As you know, I have been sitting in this board for almost two decades. I think we have been talking about rebuilding Towson and Delaney too long. My memory of the past 20 years, that several of our school budget and maintenance and building officials told us, I remember clearly, that renovation costs more than rebuilding. Renovation costs more. So memory-wise, last renovation of Towson was in 1999, and there were delays and there were cost overruns. We cannot really make the same mistake one more time. I believe that these two schools are really too old. The system has already declared them to be too old. I bought my house in Timonium in 1981, and at that time, I checked Delaney and Ridgely and Pot Spring. Delaney was okay at that time. Now, 40 years later, that school is really unsuitable and needs to be replaced. One other issue with the current recommendation is that I think it will put communities against each other. Central Area and all other areas are all one family. The solution needs to be fixing all and not really putting any community against each other. I noticed that the school system is serving meals three times a day. I think it's time to rebuild those two schools to appropriate 21st century. So when we give meals, we are taking care of the stomach, but the buildings inspire learning, safer, more effective, and the cost of renovation on the long run would be much higher than really replacing them. I really ask you to vote for replacement of Towson, Delaney High School, Lansdowne.
Thank you. Next is general public comment, and our first speaker is Glenn Gilhar.
Good evening. I'm Glenn Gilhar. I am a Republican candidate for House of Delegates in District 8. The flag I bring to you today is, it's from a dear friend who served in Vietnam. Dear distinguished board members, the army who was entrusted with defending the Afghan citizens laid down their arms at the feet of their enemies without a fight. They were equipped with the most modern fighting tools to defend their country, received over 20 years of education regarding the benefits of living in a free democratic society, yet they chose to walk away. In the days that have followed the collapse of the Afghan government, our televisions have been filled with horrifying images of desperate people falling to their deaths from a transport plane. How could this have happened? Why didn't the defenders of freedom stand and fight? My suspicion is that in their hearts, they did not have any love of their country, their government, and were missing any feeling of patriotism. In the spring of 2021, Brown University Professor Glenn Lowry published an essay that makes the case that America is the land of great opportunity for all Americans. He underscores the importance of patriotism and love of country being taught in our schools. In light of the fall of Afghanistan, I urge you to answer Professor Lowry's call. In light of the fall of Afghanistan, I urge you to answer Professor Lowry's call, adopt a resolution to honor our many veterans, and commit to include patriotic lessons in our kindergarten through 12th grade curriculum. A similar resolution was adopted in the state of West Virginia. May it be resolved that Baltimore County Public Schools recognize and include in the K-8 curriculum an explanation and importance of American holidays such as Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, and Veterans Day. May it also be resolved that students be taught the history and background of patriotic music, art, including famous memorials and paintings that celebrate America. May be further resolved that students be provided a clear explanation of the legal processes that are currently in place for an immigrant to become a legal citizen of the United States and provide an opportunity for them, our students, to take the civics portion, the civics portion of the U.S. citizenship naturalization test. I fear that if you do not act, the images that are filling our television sets in Afghanistan might actually take place in our own backyard. Please, our future generations are counting on you. Remember, our kindergarteners today are defenders of freedom tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carmelita Vogel. Excuse me, Carmita Vogel. Ms. Vogel, she's not here. Okay. Our next speaker is Ms. Yara Sheikh.
I can speak without my, my speech. Hello, my name is Yara Sheikh, and I am the PTSA president at Delaney High School. Some of you may remember me because I've been before this board since September of 2007 advocating for safer schools and replacements and renovations across this county for the past 15 years. In my role as PTSA president today, I'm asking the board to choose to replace Delaney High School rather than renovate it. In 2016, the community came before you when a $36 million renovation was proposed. $20 million of it would put it, was for central air conditioning. You have a proposal in front of you for a renovation at $136 million and a new school at $157 million. The difference is $22 million. We'd, I have, the community is wondering, will that renovation be put forth in the form it is currently in at $136 million? If it is, that's physically irresponsible of any decision-maker when a new school would cost 156 million. We know that. That's common sense. The renovation would take 56 months or 48 months, depending on the option, and a new school, the children would be in the school in 30 months. Our school's been advocating since 2014 for a comprehensive solution. If you look and a new school or replacement should be decided on a 15-year marker, as my I pass says, well, Delaney High School isn't looking to have a solution since the start of its request or the money that was put forth in 2016 for 15 years with a renovation. I would like you to consider replacing Delaney High School. I'd like you to consider keeping Delaney High School on the same state capital budget request it's been on alongside Lansdowne High School and Towson High School since 2017. What you decided to do at Lansdowne High School was the right thing to do. It was a comprehensive solution. The Delaney High School community came forward and said, do Lansdowne first. I said it. I said it at a meeting in 2017 and 18, and I'd appreciate you doing the right thing now and rebuilding our schools throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is LeAnn Dickens.
Hello. My name is LeAnn Dickens, and I'm speaking as a mom of someone who has two sons at Towson High School. And I came here tonight to show my support for Baltimore County's decision to mandate masks in schools. I am so excited at the fact that they are going to be going back to in-person learning this year. Both of my sons have ADHD, and the virtual learning at home was definitely no picnic at our house. I also know that it was incredibly hard on other children, schoolteachers, and staff. So I want to do everything that I can to make sure that they are able to stay in person at school, and I feel the best tools that we have to do that are the masks and the vaccinations. I know that some people feel that masks are uncomfortable. I get that. They're not the best, but every day, as you know, we walk around, we do uncomfortable things because it's a smart and safe thing to do. Every time I get into a car, I wear a seatbelt. My kids were always put in car seats when they were little, and now they have to wear a seatbelt, too. Neither of those are very comfortable, but you always do it because it's the best tools we have to make sure that we're the safest when we're inside a car. Sometimes you just have to do the uncomfortable thing to stay safe. I'm proud of my kids for their ability to understand this concept when they're teenagers and they're acting like adults about it. They don't have a problem wearing the masks. My kids also understand that we live in a community, and that when you decide to make a choice to live in a community, I feel you join a social contract in which you say, I will take care of the people in my community. I will be part of the collective we. That means sometimes you can't just focus and think only about the me. You have to think of others and what can be done to keep everyone safe in your community. When you think about the collective we, you realize that the best thing we can do is wear masks and get vaccinated. Unfortunately, there are a few people out there that seem to have forgotten a little bit about taking care of your neighbors and become a little too focused on the me and not so focused on being part of the collective we, and I hope that changes soon. I just wanted to let you know that you have a lot of support in the community, even if we're not always the loudest voices that you hear. The data in the CDC have shown us that masks are safe and effective, and I feel it's a small price to pay to keep our kids and teachers safe in learning in person, which is so important. So I just wanted to come and say thank you for making what I feel was the correct decision in mandating masks in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Adams. I'm a father of three daughters in Baltimore County schools. First, I'll say I wish we all didn't have to deal with COVID. It's something I'd never wish upon anyone, but I'm a horrible realist, and I realize that it's here and it's going to be here. I hear the words "data" and "science" all the time without any data and science behind them. I have a copy of Appendix E., which is the public views item L. of the executive summary for the strategic plan, and what this shows is 11 educational opportunities or assessments that were canceled supposedly due to COVID, and it's missed opportunities for our kids. So when you're making your decisions, I ask you to keep it real, to be a realist. We need to move forward. We cannot have undue restrictions and onerous rules. Here's real data. I'll give you first the number two. As simple as that, two. The CDC website shows that from August 1st to August 23rd, two children/teenagers ages 0 to 17 lost their life due to COVID-related illness. That's awful. I feel for those families. The perspective I ask you to keep is a second number, and that number's 228. That's the number of children and teens ages 0 to 17 years old who passed from August 1st to August 23rd from causes other than COVID. 110 times the number of children passed from causes other than COVID. When I saw that, I thought, surely I must be crazy, so I wanted to look at another month, and I looked at the full month of July. Maybe August isn't up to date yet. Again, it's not pleasant, but I'm a realist. 12 children and teens 0 to 17 passed from COVID-related illness in the entire United States per the CDC website in July. 2,261 children and teens 0 to 17 years old passed from non-COVID-related illnesses per the CDC website in the same month of July. 188 times the number of children passed from causes other than COVID. That, to me, is data. That, to me, is science. I share that number for perspective. The face masks we're wearing are not going to change that number. They're not. You can't impact the number two. It's such a statistically low percentage. So I ask you to focus on educating.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Bash Farone.
For the public to interpret medical information is like reading your own MRI. This is a continuation of my Central Area advice. Anything happen? No, okay. Our team in the Central Area is moving along. You are all invited to attend our first presentation on September 1st. It is about recruitment of teachers and retaining them. Our really goal in the Central Area is to highlight the importance of effective education. It is not just a schoolhouse. It is about teachers and supportive staff. I'm happy to report to you that Vice Chair Eurichia and Angrid Wu, J.D., are championing the topic of no hate, no Asian hate. Both members will take that initiative and also the advancement of Chinese language in BCPS. I'm also happy to report to you that Professor Niccolino Appluso, a member of our Central Area, will be championing the expansion of Italian and Latin languages. As you know, Latin and Greek are a major source of both medical and legal nomenclature in our language. And of course, I always remember Monica Bellusi and Sofia Lorenz. I'm happy to report to you that Ms. LeAnn Dickens, who spoke just earlier, will be championing the topic of effective communication in the Central Area. I'm also happy to report that our rising star student, Mr. Logan Tao, will be championing the topic of STEM education and the engagement of retired teachers. They are not old. They are seasoned and experienced. Finally, I'm happy to report to you that Mr. Manny Hansen, a potential member, shall champion the topic of saving money in my school bucks program and maybe other financial things. Mr. Manny Hansen is a financial advisor, and money issues would be of help. Kindly help our members in whichever way you can. We are a team, and we are.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Marco Clark.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Marco Clark, and I am the liaison for the Sunset Ridge Homeowners Association community located right across the street from Randallstown High School. I come to you because I've lived in this community for approximately two decades, and we have watched our high school become very dilapidated. When we look at safe passage for our students, there are many ways we look at safety, but a clear pathway to walk is something that we are not seeing in our school. There are broken-down sidewalks, potholes in the parking lot, and that parking lot has not been repaved in nearly two decades. It is a danger to our young people and to the community who utilizes the school for walking, for exercising. Some of our community members are doing that, and they cannot do it with a safe and clear passageway. We've also looked at the building that continuously has trash around it, and there are not enough trash cans out there to support the community to keep it clean. We have a high tax rate of homeowners in our community, and yet our young people are choosing to go to other schools outside of Randallstown High School. This has become a bus depot for students in the morning because the building is becoming dilapidated. What I'm excited about is that we have a new principal that's there who has great ideas on instruction. We also have a great executive director of secondary schools who is supportive, and we've met with them, and we would like to see our school community fixed. We would like to see those sidewalks corrected, and a new paved parking lot so that folks can come around in the community and support it. Randallstown has been left out of the support or assuring that our community will be great and that our schools, our students should not have to go into a school that looks like that. We know students respond to what they see, and if you're walking into a building that is dilapidated and does not look modern like the other high schools that I've traveled around the county to look at and to see that they are having to be learning in an environment like that, they are choosing to go to other places, which is unfair. As an educator and administrator of over 25 years, I understand that what you see is the response that students will give you, and they will look at how education is moving in their community. So I ask this board, and thank you for the opportunity, to be sitting here before you to say, can we get the parking lot fixed? Can we get the sidewalks fixed? And can we make sure that the beautification in our community is standing strong so our students will feel great about being educated in their neighborhood and not having to get on the bus at 6:00 in the morning to leave? I know because a father, I was a father of a young lady who left the community to come to Towson every day to go to high school because she did not want to go across the block because the way it looked. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next is, excuse me, Mr. Lawrence White, she's not here. Okay, so I believe that does it for our speakers for public comment. The next item on the agenda is action taken in closed session, and for that, I'll call on Ms. Bressler.
Dr. Williams, members of the board, there was no action to report from closed session today.
Thank you, Ms. Bressler.
You're welcome.
Our next item is consideration of Board of Education of Baltimore County Board Principals. In our retreat, board members developed the following principles to help guide board members' conduct and discussions. And I will read that for everyone. In keeping with policy 0100 and 0200, I will keep student needs, interests, safety, and success at the center of my decision-making, number one. Number two, I will center equity in my work as a board member, recognizing the need to acknowledge the systemic inequities that persist for historically underserved student populations. Number three, I will treat each board member respectfully, recognizing treat each board member respectfully, recognizing that we are being watched by students, staff, and our community, and have a responsibility to model appropriate behavior and conduct during our meetings. I will take responsibility for my behavior. I will read all materials in advance of meetings and be prepared to act on agenda items. Number six, I will listen with an open mind and demonstrate flexibility and creativity in seeking solutions. Number seven, I will listen to all board members' expressions of ideas and opinions, including and especially those in opposition to mine, with an open mind and with the expectation that every board member holds the best of intentions with student success as the goal. Number eight, I will exercise my ability to change my opinion or position on an issue as part of our discussions. I am not locked into an initial stated position. Number nine, I will make allowances for and extend grace to my colleagues when occasional errors or mistakes occur, turning mistakes into opportunities for growth. Number 10, I will practice fiscal responsibility and sound financial management to support our capacity to adequately fund programs and priorities. Number 11, I will maintain my sense of humor, optimism, and hope while engaging in the board's work. I will hold myself and my colleagues accountable, excuse me, number 12, I will hold myself and my colleagues accountable for upholding these operating principles. Number 13, I will participate in an annual board self-evaluation and review these operating principles. Board members, may I have a motion to approve the Board of Education of Baltimore County Board Principals?
So moved.
That was Ms. Joe's?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Matt.
Second, Ms. Mac. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Causey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just appreciate my colleagues on the board and in spending the extra time discussing our roles and our methods, and so I really appreciate the consensus in coming to this and understanding that it's a supplement to policies and our board handbook and Robert's rules that we operate under as well. And I am optimistic about this being a positive, a positive thing for the board. So thank you to all of my colleagues and Madam Chair for arranging these opportunities.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Ms. Gover, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Row?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Matt?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joe?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Pastor?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. Thank you. The motion carries. And board members, please remember to sign the document before you leave this evening. It'll be over there on the table. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consideration of a privately funded capital project for Gunpowder Elementary School, and for that I call on Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair Scott, Vice Chair Hen, Superintendent Williams, and members of the board. Tonight I bring forward for approval a privately funded capital improvement project for the resurfacing of the multipurpose court at Gunpowder Elementary School. The resurfacing of the multipurpose court is being paid for by the Gunpowder Elementary School PTA. It will be dedicated as part of the Officer Caprio Playground Project. The parents of the PTA at Gunpowder Elementary School began the Officer Caprio Playground Project in November 2019. The value of the donation is $79,995. This will cover the cost of materials, equipment, fees, and overhead associated with the resurfacing of the multipurpose court. In accordance with policy and Rule 7330, this special request, or this request has progressed through all normal internal processes of review and is presented for your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the privately funded capital project for Gunpowder Elementary School's multipurpose court?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Row.
Any discussion? Yes, Mr. McMillian.
Dr. Roberts, as a former physical education teacher athletic director, I looked at these plans. This is an outstanding resurfacing. This is a model for all elementary schools in Baltimore County. As happy as I am for that community, I'm sad that PTA has to pay almost $80,000 to have this work done. It just saddens me that BCPS can't find the money to do that for that community and take that $80,000 and move it in a different direction. But it is a tremendous, I looked at each diagram, I looked at the courts, I looked at how they laid that out, and it's going to be a wonderful addition to that school community. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Causey.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge the PTSA at Gunpowder and also the PTSA's throughout the Baltimore County Public Schools that do an amazing job, not only supporting needs of the school, but also in acknowledging the important things that happen in their community. And this is such a great memorial in recognition of Sergeant Caprio. So I just wanted to acknowledge Gunpowder and the honor and the sacrifice of Sergeant Caprio.
Thank you, Ms. Causey. Other questions? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the privately funded capital project for Gunpowder Elementary School's multipurpose room?
Madam Chair, there's a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I already did that, and there was discussion. So now it's the roll, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hen?
Yes, there's a motion and a second.
Yes, I'm sorry. So, Ms. Gover, can we have a roll call vote, please? Yes, could we confirm who moved?
There were so many.
It was several. So it was Mr. Coon?
And Ms. Row.
And then Ms. Row seconded. Okay.
Ms. Row?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Matt?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joe?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is item I. And the next item on the agenda is the consideration of the fiscal year '22 negotiation teams, and for that I call on Mr. Duke.
Good evening, Board Chair Scott, Vice Chair Hen, Dr. Williams, members of the Board of Education. I'm here with Mr. George Duke, Department of Staff Relations and Employee Performance Management, to present for your consideration the FY 2022 negotiations teams.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Hen, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. You've been provided with a list of proposed negotiating teams for fiscal year '22 negotiations. I would request the board's consideration and approval of the teams as presented.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal year '22 negotiation teams?
So moved, Offerman.
Is there a second?
Second, Thomas.
Thank you. Ms. Gover, may I have a roll call vote, please? Can't second that. I'm sorry. I thought it was.
I could, Ms. Pastor.
Ms. Pastor. Yeah. Sorry. Any discussion? Ms. Gover, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Abstain.
Ms. Matt?
Yes.
Ms. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joe?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Pastor?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Weber, it's 10.
Thank you. Motion carries. The motion carries. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is the report on teacher salary restructuring, and for that I call on Ms. Charlie Green and Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Board Chair Scott. I will defer to Mr. Duke, who will review our teacher salary scale restructure report.
Good evening, members of the board. There is a PowerPoint presentation. I would ask for the first slide, please. This evening's presentation will provide you with information regarding the teacher salary scale restructuring model that was developed in collaboration with the Teachers Association of Baltimore County. Next slide, please. During the 2019-2020 negotiations, BCPS and the Teachers Association of Baltimore County agreed to form a new salary scale ad hoc committee to collaboratively examine the current tabco salary scale, work to create a new teacher salary scale, and to cost out a five-year phased implementation timeline for that new scale. The committee established three key objectives to guide its work in creating the new scale. They included reducing the number of steps on the scale in order to increase a teacher's career earnings, standardize the interval between steps to reduce the cost of annual step advances, and to increase the number of professional development lanes on the scale. Next slide, please. On our current fiscal year '22 scale, effective 1 January 2022, a new teacher with a bachelor's degree starts their teaching career at $52,786, and with an advanced degree maxes out on the scale at step 30. The current scale has no consistent interval increases between the steps. The step intervals range from 0.78% to 3.5%. As a comparison note, I'd like to let the board know that currently the starting salary in some of our sister LEAs start in the 40, high 40s. For example, Harford County's starting salary is $50,649, and their salary scale contains 24 steps. Montgomery County starts at $51,513, and their salary scale contains 25 steps. Anne Arundel County's starting salary is at $47,836 with a scale of 25 steps. Prince George's is starting at $49,963 with 21 steps. And Howard County, which is currently in impasse with its teachers' union, therefore there is no 2020-2021 contract. However, in accordance with the 2019-2020 contract, their starting salary is $48,519 with a salary scale comprised of 25 steps. Next slide, please. In order to develop a viable model, it was assumed that the value of step 30 on the current scales would remain the same, but that it would be attained by a teacher in less than 30 years. Additionally, it was assumed that while the step values would be increased, the bachelor's scale would max out at step 10 as it currently does, and that the starting salary for new teachers would start at $60,000 effective on July 1st of 2026. The model does not factor in any COLAs. If a COLA were given during the five years comprised by this timeline, it would be applied and would increase the step values accordingly. Also, the additional 15 minutes added to the student day in fiscal year '22 and grant-funded through fiscal year '24 would have to be funded by Baltimore County starting in fiscal year '25. Next slide, please. The model calls for the restructuring process to be phased in over five years, starting in July of 2022, which is fiscal year '23. The process initiates with a 2% increment standardization between steps. To accomplish this, the starting salaries for bachelor's, master's, master's plus 30, master's plus 60, and doctorate will have to be increased so that the max step amounts remain fixed, given the 2% increment. The cost of accomplishing step standardization is approximately $18,872. Next slide, please. This slide shows the compacting process for the bachelor's scale with a two-step increment standardization. The BA scale, unlike the others, maxes out at step 10. The compression process begins with step 2 from the fiscal year '23 scale becoming fiscal year '24's new step 1. Also, while step 1 increases in each subsequent fiscal year, step 10 also increases by 2% until reaching the max of $71,495. The process varies slightly in fiscal year '27 when an additional bump is needed to step 1 in order for it to peg the starting salary for teachers at $60,000 in order to comply with the goal established by the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. Next slide, please. Unlike the bachelor's scale, the other scales do not max out at step 10. This slide depicts the compressing process on the master's degree scale. Again, in fiscal year '23, step 2 from fiscal year '22 becomes step 1 on the fiscal year '23 scale, and the fiscal year '22 step 30 becomes the new step 29. The same process is followed for fiscal years '24, '25, '26, and '27. While the step 1 salary will increase each year, the scale's maximum salary will remain the same as the total number of steps on the scale decreases. In fiscal year '27, the scale will have 25 steps, with step 1 pegged at $62,694, and step 25 will be $108,400. The same process would be followed for the master's plus 30, master's plus 60, and the doctorate scales. Next slide, please. In fiscal year '27, the salary scale will have 25 steps. All step intervals will be 2%, and the starting salary for teachers new to the profession will be $60,000. Therefore, effective July 1st of 2026, upon completion of the restructuring, the new scale would have the following characteristics. Teachers new to the profession with a bachelor's degree would start at $60,000 as required by the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, House Bill 1372. Salary scale step intervals would be standardized at 2%, and the teachers would achieve their maximum earnings in 25 years. Next slide, please. As mentioned, the restructuring will result in an increase in starting salaries for teachers in each of the scale's columns. This slide demonstrates how those salary increases each fiscal year over the five-year restructuring period. Assuming a teacher remains within the same salary lane, the slide compares a teacher's career earnings at step 25 on the fiscal year '22 scale to what it will be on the restructured fiscal year '27 salary scale. Next slide, please. This slide presents the annual cost for compressing the scale by one step each year, assuming that the step movement is funded each fiscal year. As the restructuring process progresses, step 1 is set at a new and higher amount, with a corresponding ripple effect throughout the scale resulting in employees being paid at a higher annual salary each year. The chart also provides the cumulative cost increase per year versus fiscal year '22 costs. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes the annual cost for advancing one step in the compression process. And finally, next slide, please. This slide provides the annual and cumulative budget cost increases versus fiscal year '22. The total cumulative increased cost of the restructuring as compared to fiscal year '22 is $186,858,427. This concludes my presentation. I will be happy to entertain questions that you may have.
Thank you for that. So we'll go in order, I believe I saw Mr. Coon's hand first, and then Ms. Pastor, and then Ms. Mac.
Thank you for this presentation. It's very informative. So I have a basic question that I've been struggling with, and it has to do with the fact that we are forcing teachers to get master's degree and master's plus 30, plus 60, and PhD if they want to progress. But I believe there should be other pathways to expand and become a professional that is adding value to a classroom without having to go and get a master's degree. So I would ask you, did anybody consider expanding the bachelor degree beyond 10 steps? So I would ask you, did anybody consider expanding the bachelor degree beyond 10 steps to give people that are just really good teachers, that don't have the time to sit there and go for a master's degree, but might be reading specialists that have, you know, specific qualities and skills that are in demand even outside of school systems, to give them a path to continue to do what they love without having to do that?
In our consideration of the salary scale restructuring, we did not take that into account. However, there is a, as part of the legislation, we do have to start developing and considering career ladders, and those career ladders will have salary implications that go along with them. This is sort of a preliminary step. I think we will have to go ahead and take this and put it into the context of developing career ladders and defining what those career ladders will be and what kind of characteristics a teacher will have to have in order to progress in those career ladders, and what type of lateral movement will occur between those career ladders. And that is going to have to be something that's going to be involving negotiations with the collective bargaining unit.
Thank you. When is that scheduled or required to happen?
I believe that we have to have career ladders in place beginning in fiscal year 24, but I'm not totally sure.
I would suggest we're missing an opportunity here, because we're talking about spending $186 million once implemented, and I'm not saying I don't agree with it overall, but I think the pathway for a teacher
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Should include more than just the 10 steps, the 10 initial steps in the BA.
Just to address that, and I'm not saying that it's correct, but it's always been MSD's position up to now that ideally a teacher should, by their eighth year, sixth to eighth year of teaching, earn a master's degree in order to then progress and get an advanced professional certificate, an APC. The teacher begins their career with an SPC, which is standard professional, and maintains that standard professional until they achieve a master's degree.
And I don't want anyone to think that I'm anti-education, but we are spending a significant amount of money just in reading programs that are supposed to have tremendous professional development support. And that is hands-on work that is going to provide our students with support of what they need, and it doesn't have to be in a graduate classroom.
Yeah, I was just making that comment just to put it in context.
Okay, yes, Ms. Pastore.
First, I want to thank you for getting into this, because this is something that we've been asking for, for a very long time, and we do need to be in step with other LEAs. So making that movement is critical. Thank you for getting the work started. Mr. Coon is absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. Having served on the funding committee for the blueprint, I will tell you that this serves as the basic level for us to get, just to compress the salary. But as Mr. Duke just said, it will be required of every LEA to find internal ways to get certification and pay so that all school systems can start moving teachers in a way that they stay teachers, that they, one, don't leave, two, don't feel the need that the only way to get an increase is to become an administrator. So you're absolutely on point. In fact, as of June of 2022, all school systems are going to turn in their first reports or their first plans, if you will, on how they are going to do some of these things, because it is leveled out by years as we go along in the next few. So we needed to start this, because if we hadn't started this basic plan and then tried to move forward, we would have been behind the eight ball. We would have been in serious difficulty. So you're on point, and thank you. And I would like to circle back at some point to ask a question about how 12-month pay fits for 10-month people as a part of this, and I'm going to direct it to Dr. Williams, but I'll stop now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coon.
Next was Ms. Mack.
Mr. Duke, thank you very much for this, and thank you for bringing the starting salaries for other LEAs for a BA. Do you happen to have that information for a master's?
I do not, but I can get it for you.
Okay.
I do have scales, but rather than going ahead and digging it out, I can just go ahead and provide it to you.
I would appreciate that. And my reason for asking that is, it appears that on the slides that you provided, the differences between teachers with BAs and MAs are very minimal in the early years. It's a $1,234 difference in FY '22 and a $2,694 difference in FY '27. If we want to attract the most educated teachers for our system, I would think that our starting salaries for a master's degree would reflect our commitment to do so. Is there a reason why those numbers are so close?
No, I can't really comment to that. I know that our fiscal department tried to go ahead, and when we discussed it, we tried to go ahead and maintain a standardized interval. In fiscal year 27, the difference between a bachelor's to a master's is 2694, and then for masters to masters plus 30 is 2962. So we tried to go ahead and provide a maximum benefit to a teacher going from bachelor's to master's, because our current, in our current scale, the difference was only $1,243 from bachelor's to master's, whereas from masters to masters plus 30 was $2,500. So there was a discrepancy there, and we were trying to go ahead and standardize it, but also to maximize the reward for going from a bachelor's to a master's and making it more attractive.
I guess I'm just questioning if the reward offsets the cost of getting a master's, but that's just a rhetorical question. My next question is, when starting salaries increase, so when a person starts on June 1, 2026, at $60,000, is there any way, because there were people who started at a much lower rate, are we going to have new employees making more than tenured teachers? People who got tenure, let's say, in the last five years? Because if they're starting at $52,000, they don't happen to get a step or a COLA. And if we are, I think we need to address that, because I think teachers should be rewarded for their time and title and their contribution to the school system.
They shouldn't, because there's a ripple effect throughout the scale as we compress the scale. So a new teacher starting at $60,000 would not earn more than a veteran teacher. I mean, we do have situations where new teachers might possibly earn more than a tenured teacher, depending on what their experience has been.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm talking about the average teacher who comes in. Are we going to ensure that he or she is not making more than teachers who have been here four to five years?
They shouldn't. But I mean, that's one of the things that we tried to do when we built this, is this is basically a starting point for discussion and review, and then for identification of issues that might need resolution and going back and looking at to find resolution. I'll definitely take that comment and ask our fiscal people to look at that scenario to see whether or not that actually would possibly occur.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Causey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for that presentation. I appreciate my colleagues' questions, which are very helpful to my understanding. I especially appreciate Ms. Pastore and her expertise related to Kerwin and the scale step and our teachers, how they move forward over time. I would like to know a little bit more about the process of how this was developed, who was involved thus far, and then what are the next steps in terms of timing? How much was Tabco involved, the county finances, folks that we deal with over there? And then is it looking forward to bring this forward into the next operating budget cycle?
Tabco participated from the beginning. We had discussions with our fiscal, we had representatives from our fiscal office. Tabco had a small working team comprised of the executive director and, I believe there were two teachers. They presented a proposal. We discussed the establishment of the objectives. Based on the establishment of the objectives, our fiscal department crafted a model. That model, and Tabco provided us with a model of what they conceived or perceived, the characteristics of what they thought a scale should look like. And as I said, our fiscal department developed a model. We reviewed the model, made changes to it based on comments and input from Tabco. We did invite the county to participate, and we did have a representative initially. However, the representative did not participate in our latter sessions. We do understand that we definitely have to get buy-in from the county, because this is not something that's going to be accomplished without funding from the county and fiscal support from the county. As far as moving forward, based on input from the board and questions and comments, I've provided a copy of the presentation to Tabco, and then we'll rejoin the effort. And based on the information and feedback that we receive and additional guidance, we can revisit. And as I said, we also need to now take this and put it into the context of our development of career ladders for teachers, and how this might fit. It might have to be adjusted, depending how we develop our career ladders and what those ladders are going to look like, and how those ladders are going to be compensated. So this is an evolving, I perceive this as being an evolving process. This is not going to be the end product.
Thank you. And I also dovetail with Ms. Mack. I appreciate the additional information from the other counties that is helpful to us. So I look forward to seeing the rest of that.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Ms. Pastore, you had another question?
This is to Dr. Williams. At the last board member, I indicated that I wanted to say something or have a discussion about 12-month pay for 10-month employees. Dr. Williams, can you just tell us where we are with that in light of the fact that there are going to be some really broad changes, either you and Dr. Scriven? Just say, give us an understanding of where you're moving forward. I know we made a motion, '24, '25, that's a long way off, sounds like a long way, but I know you're moving forward. Can you just give us some information so we know?
Sure. So first, I want to just acknowledge Mr. Duke and the team for working on this. I know this was of interest from the board. And the second piece, I think it relates to Ms. Causey's question. This is affiliated with the Blueprint for Maryland. There's several other components, and as Ms. Pastore mentioned, we will be working on a plan that is due next year. We're still working through those logistics. In terms of the 12-month pay, as you know, the team presented a little bit of some of the challenges, but they have gone back and begun looking at that work to move forward. We recognize that these are important elements for our teachers, as Ms. Pastore said, and I agree. We want to keep the best in the classroom, and everyone does not want to be an administrator. We acknowledge that as well. So looking at the salaries and benefits and opportunities, as Mr. Duke shared about the career lattice, we'll look at that. But that's the work with the 12-month pay is being revisited. We'll probably have a timeline to present as to how we are progressing with that. Be happy to share that with the board. So these are good things that are happening in our system. It does require many conversations with our funding sources in terms of how are we going to build this, and knowing that 88%, close to 88% of our budget is for people and benefits, I think it's worthwhile. It's a worthwhile venture for us to go down this path. So timeline will be developed. Thank you, Mr. Duke, for this presentation and the work with Tabco.
Then I'll just hold my motion. The timeline will be soon, I hope.
We'll work on the timeline, yes.
All right, then, I'll hold my motion until I look at your timeline so that it'll be more germane and more feasible to what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. So it looks like the next item on the agenda is the report on teacher sal—oh, excuse me. We just did that. The next item on the agenda is the report on graduation. Postponed from the August 10 board meeting, for that, I call on Dr. Wheatley Phillips. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair. Scott Vice-John, Superintendent Dr. Williams, and members of the board. Tonight, I will provide an update on the 2020 graduation requirements and progress on the Board of Education goal related to bridge projects. Joining me tonight is Dr. Monica Hetrick, our Director of Performance Management. Next slide, please. For exiting Grade 12 students, graduation requirements include completing 21 credits in required coursework, including passing required graduation courses in Algebra I, ELA 10, Life Sciences, and American Government. Due to the impact of the COVID-19 global pandemic on state testing and students learning their hybrid model, MSD granted graduation waivers to students in the 2018-2021 cohort for completing student service learning hours, passing MCAP assessments requirements, and completing bridge projects for students who previously had passed the course but not the assessment. Next slide, please. The summer graduation ceremony was held on Saturday, August 14, 2021. Our teams will now work across divisions and with our state partners to reconcile the graduation data. MSD will release the official 2018-2021 cohort four-year adjusted graduation rate around February of 2022. Next slide, please. As a board, one of the goals set was to reduce the number of students who have to complete bridge projects to meet the state assessment requirement for graduation. Due to the global pandemic, MSD waived all bridge projects for graduates in the class of 2021. Therefore, zero bridge projects were completed in BCPS. Next slide, please. At this time, Dr. Hetrick will provide an overview of the early fall assessments. Dr. Hetrick?
Yes. Good evening. In order to meet the federal testing mandates, the United States Department of Education allowed MSD to postpone the 2020-2021 state assessments until this fall. Maryland schools will be administering shortened versions of the state assessments in ELA, math, and science this fall, and students will take the tests associated with the grade level they were enrolled in during the last year, school year. All state assessments for the current 2021-2022 school year will be administered during their regular timeframes. Next slide, please. For 2021, the state will be administering state assessments on their regular schedule shown on this slide. Next slide, please.
So thank you, Dr. Hetrick. We look forward to providing an update on our graduation rates in the spring when we receive data from the state of Maryland. We thank you for joining us in celebrating 41 graduation ceremonies in May and June of 2021 at the CQ Center at Towson University, where over 7,500 students participated in celebrating their graduations and achievement in a year unlike any other. Equally, we enjoyed a joyous and memorable graduation ceremony for our summer graduates on August 14, 2021, at the George Washington Carver Center for Arts and Technology. We thank you for the opportunity to present this information. We hope at this time—
We hope at this time that you enjoy a recap of our graduates. At this time, we'll ask Mr. Victor to play the video.
To all the loved ones and our parents in the audience and joining us via live stream, I know that you're so proud.
Our classes experienced more historical moments in our four short years than I can count on my fingers. However, through political unrest, racial divide, existential threat of climate change, a once-in-a-lifetime global pandemic, and even swarms of cicadas, we have prevailed through it all and are a symbol of the resilience of our generation.
Here we are today, at the end of that journey, moving on to another chapter in this journey called life. We cannot let the circumstances we will encounter define us.
And only two and a half years together, so many of our memories together seem like such a distant blur. We have all been isolated from one another and yet simultaneously forever bonded from the shared trauma of this pandemic. Now, I don't say all this simply to depress you all. I say this because despite it all, we made it.
You are the most valuable resource our community has. You must understand that the pandemic was just your waiting period because the soil had to harden so you could grow to your maximum potential.
On a more serious note, saying goodbye is bittersweet, but at least graduation is in person. I'm pretty tired of Google meets.
So live, be free, be safe, and know that you are loved.
I just have to acknowledge the Division of Research Accountability and Assessment.
Please raise your right hand.
Uh-oh.
I know who that was. I just want to acknowledge you for the work as we continue to look at our goals affiliated with the compass, the goals affiliated with our board, and also want to acknowledge the Department of Communications for actually developing that video for graduation. So thank you all.
Yes, I echo that. Thank you. It's well done. Okay. Are there any questions from board members? Hey, I'll go in order, Ms. Mack and then Ms. Rowe.
Thank you both very much, and thank you for bringing this back because this was one of our board goals. My research shows that the last audit of bridge plans done by MSDE was done in 2015, and some of the data shown in that audit are pretty alarming. Would you be able to bring back to the board the last four years of bridge plan use, how BCPS compares to the state? I know that 20 is thrown out the window and of course 21 because of the pandemic, but I don't think 19 was impacted. I feel like we've been in COVID forever, but I don't think 19 was impacted by COVID. Can we see that data as to our use of bridge plans? Because I think we need to know where we are to figure out where we want to be.
Thank you so much.
So let me, let me interject. I think the question might be, are we going to continue to use bridge plans as there is a new assessment? So I would say to the board, keep in mind, the state assessment has changed over the last 10 years, at least twice. It's changing again, and this feels like old data as we're trying to move forward with the new assessment. Dr. Hetrick mentioned about the fall diagnostic assessment and what's happening in the spring. And so we are, all systems are having multiple conversations with the state to figure out what will this look like, how soon will we get the data, how we can use the data. And although this was a board goal around the bridge plans, the question would be, what will that now look like with this new assessment? So I would just put a pause in that maybe request, Ms. Mack, until we know what this new assessment will look like. And then for students who may need additional time, what might that be? The bridge plan was used for students who have taken the test multiple times, needed an additional way of demonstrating their performance around certain goals and content. So I would just caution about going back in time, looking at old data as we're looking at, one, a new assessment and new curriculum moving forward with the fact that we are still in the pandemic. So I just, I would ask that the board just pause on that until we know more about the upcoming assessment.
I appreciate that additional information. I do have a very simple question that has nothing to do, I think you mentioned that when kids take the shortened version of the test this year, they're going to take it based on what grade they were in last year.
Yes.
How is that physically going to look in a school? If I'm a fifth-grade teacher, am I, the fifth-grade teacher, going to administer the fourth-grade test? Or my kid's going to go to a fourth? I mean, what does it look like practically speaking?
So yes, you are, you are correct. So the 2020-2021 assessments will be administered this fall. So students, like as you said, that are in, going to be in fifth grade, will be taking the fourth-grade assessment. I know that our Office of Assessment team is working with this school testing coordinators as well as the staff in the schools to determine what the best schedule is for the students. I'm not, I can't speak about specifics, but...
But all students will be taking an earlier year's assessment?
Yes.
And that's all the way up?
So, so for instance, fourth graders would be taking, students who will be in fourth grade this year will be taking third-grade assessments. Students in grades K through 2 do not take the MCAP.
Right, that's...
So in this year, I guess...
And even in high school? So if I'm an 11th grader, I'm taking the 10th grade test?
Right. So the only assessments that are administered...
Oh, that's right, it's only 10th grade.
Right. It's the English 10.
Right.
So, right. So that's, that's what's going to happen.
Thank you very much. Thank you both.
Thank you so much. And part of that is really just being fair to students because if I'm a fourth grader and I take a third-grade test, that's, that's content that has been taught to me. So we provide the opportunity for that.
No, I'm not questioning that. I was thinking of the logistics of it. That's all.
Thank you. It's Ms. Rowe, then Ms. Causey, then Mr. Coon.
So, just so that I understand, you said that the bridge plans were waived. Does that mean that students who would have required a bridge plan to graduate were not permitted to graduate? Or the students were permitted to graduate without having to do a bridge plan?
That is correct.
The latter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Causey.
Thank you for that presentation, and I especially love the video. It's always wonderful to see our students, and that is the culmination of why we are all here, is to help them get across that stage, moving forward into a career or college. So I had a couple of quick questions. One, Maryland has a longitudinal data system where a number of agencies are able to pull data from there. So MSDE pulls data for certain reports, the legislature might, Maryland Higher Education Commission. Before Blueprint and Kerwin, there was P20 Leadership Council that was evaluating education from pre-kindergarten to post-secondary degrees. So in that, they're tracking different outcomes over time. How are the students that graduated this year but did not meet the proficiency standards or they were waived? How is it known whether, you know, whether they were on track to be proficient?
So I'll ask Dr. Hetrick to weigh in on that, but I think that our students and students across our state would be where everyone else is because all systems across the U.S. because of COVID really had to make some conciliations in terms of how we determine the degree to which students are ready to be college and career ready, or just, you know, for college. And so in determining where students are, we're kind of creating a specific cadre of students that have gone through a similar experience. And so the waiving of those requirements puts together a pool of students that I think for future study, we'll have to take a look at this particular group.
Excuse, could you speak into the microphone? We can't hear you.
I'm so sorry. The answer to the question is that, you know, our students in BCPS, along with students within the United States, face similar experience in terms of COVID. And so the waiving of certain requirements almost creates a cadre of students, or particular cohorts of students for which certain requirements were waived. And in terms of study and looking at the degree to which these students are deemed ready for beyond, beyond grade 12, that particular cohort, I think, will have to be a special study group just because they've all had the same experience in terms of assessments being waived, the manner within which they were educated through this virtual lens and also, you know, the hybrid model. So in terms of determining the degree to which students are ready beyond grade 12, I think that's something for future study because we'll have to take a look at it. It's not just us, but it's also other school systems in which students would have been in the same place. And it's unlike any, so it's not been, it's not been studied.
Right. And thank you for that. And I guess my clarification was more along the lines of, did MSDE give us a code? So we had students set by, let's say, grades, looked like they, you know, they were becoming proficient.
Right.
Whereas there were other students who were struggling with their grades. So did MSDE give us any way to categorize students who looked like they were on their way to proficiency because of grades and others who did not necessarily look like they were headed, headed that way?
I do not believe we have that type of distinction, Dr. Hetrick.
Yes, no, at this point, I do not think we have that distinction. And to echo what Dr. Wheatley Phillips said, though, this is a specific cohort of students. So even with the Maryland Longitudinal Data Study, you know, I can't speak for them, but I'm assuming that when they would do any reporting, they would make sure to operationalize what these, how these students are different than other students.
Right. And they do keep track of other things in terms of PSAT scores and SAT scores. But it's all done anonymously. The identifying factors of the students are removed. So I was just curious as to how that was working. Okay, thank you.
But I just want to remind Ms. Causey, remember, some of our colleagues waived some of their admissions as well. So as to what Dr. Wheatley Phillips said, this may be a cohort based on the pandemic and what everyone had to adjust during the past 18 months.
Yeah, next, Ms. Rowe.
I'll pass. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Rowe?
So when students take the tests in the fall, they're also going to be taking MAP tests in the fall? And so ordinarily, parents will get the results of the MCAP. The tests that the students take in the fall, are parents going to see the results of those?
Of the, of the MCAP assessments, the fall diagnostic assessments? I believe that the state has, is still working on, on that process in terms of when the data will be available and how it will be reported out. I know it's, it's used as a diagnostic assessment. There are actually, more information probably may be coming from the state board, the upcoming state board, but at this time, I don't think we have a timeline.
Okay. And will parents be able to see the MAP data when that comes out?
We typically...
We do typically. Are we still going to, like COVID hasn't changed any of that?
No.
I don't believe so.
No.
Okay.
That is our plan. And in terms of the state assessment, there's, I believe Dr. McComas will have an upcoming meeting with her colleagues across the state as well as Stacy Shaq with her colleagues. Because those questions, Ms. Rowe, we have been asking, so if we're going to have an early assessment, when the data will be available? And more importantly, how can we use that data? That's the bigger question. So we get data, it's going to be used for schools, for administrators, for teachers to make some informed decision. And so as we get more information, definitely we'll be informing our community and of course our board.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right. Thank you very much. So it looks like the next item on the agenda is the end-of-year report on the Fiscal 2021 Compass: Our Path to Excellence. And for that, I call on Dr. Wheatley Phillips.
Going to huddle a little closer today. So good evening, Board Chair Scott, Vice Chair Hen, Superintendent Dr. Williams, and members of the board. Tonight, joining me are Executive Directors Mr. Kevin Connolly and Dr. Eric Minus, who will share in presenting the information. Tonight, we will provide an end-of-year update on the Compass: Our Pathway to Excellence and a look ahead to 2021 to the 2022 school year. This is one of several presentations that will be provided to the Board of Education. Updates will be provided on assessments and Board of Education goals. Next slide, please.
Good evening. The Compass: Our Pathway to Excellence articulates the vision, purpose, and core values of our work as a school system. Our Compass commitments, equity in action statements, key initiatives and strategies, all come together to help organize our work and our purpose of serving students. The intentional alignment of our strategic plan ensures that every function of our school system is designed to provide all students with multiple pathways to success in college, career, and service. Equity and access, opportunity, and achievement for all students are critical indicators to our success as a school system. Goals, action steps, and professional learning drive our aligned efforts. Through progress monitoring and analyses, all levels of the organization engage in reflective practices for continuous improvement. Through this process, high-performing teams use data-informed decisions to develop goals aligned with our system initiatives as well as implement action steps and professional learning to accomplish our goals. Next slide, please. Our summer planning workgroup, administrators, teachers, and support staff launched virtual and in-person learning experiences for students. By offering programs in literacy and math instruction, early childhood, early college, and social emotional support, students were provided with opportunities to complete any unfinished learning that may have occurred throughout the pandemic and over the course of the summer break. Staff were engaged in robust professional learning activities to assist school teams in determining our current levels of student performance. And on August 14th, we celebrated the summer graduates of the class of 2021. Next slide, please.
Good evening. BCPS provides staff, families, and our community with a robust platform of data to support our focus on continuous improvement, transparency, and collaboration. Each of these dashboards are available through bcps.org and are updated on an annual basis. In addition, BCPS publicly posts key reports to provide detailed data and analyses. Both platforms provide opportunities for all stakeholders to understand important information about our school system, demonstrate our progress towards priority goals, and engage in data-informed discussions and decisions. Next slide, please. So Team BCPS is so proud of the outstanding accomplishments of our students, schools, offices, and community during all of the challenges presented by the COVID-19 global pandemic. This year, we achieved our goal of having a one-to-one student-to-device ratio for all K through 12 students. In addition, we are serving summer meals at 63 schools and community locations. 21 BCPS students across nine of our high schools were named National Merit semifinalists. Ms. Rebecca Fesser from Middleboro Elementary was named the 2020 Education Support Professional of Baltimore County Parrot Educator of the Year. BCPS students, staff, and schools have won numerous awards at the BCPS students, staff, and schools have won numerous awards at the state and national level for academic, business, career, dance, music, art, athletic, and in so many more programs. In addition, Mr. Adam Lay, who serves as the Social Studies Department Chair at Parkville High School, has been named the 2021 Maryland History Teacher of the Year by the Gilder Lehman Institute of American History. He was selected from a record 8,510 teachers nationwide to represent Maryland. We added our 23rd, our 23rd National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence. And for the 16th consecutive year, BCPS was named one of the best school systems for music education. Along with the U.S. News and World Report, we celebrate the naming of two BCPS high schools as a top 10 high school in the state of Maryland. Additional highlights, the Association of School Business Officials International awarded BCPS its Meritorious Budget Award for Excellence in Budget Presentation. And for the 16th consecutive year, our budget team earned the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. So as we prepare for the 2021-2022 school year, we know that preparation, effort, talent, and the resources of our school system will provide us with the tools needed to accelerate student learning. And the compass, Our Pathway to Excellence, will provide the aligned vision, purpose, and focus to accomplish this critical work. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Minus. In looking ahead, we are focused on the following. ICT 2.0 to provide resources and supports to schools. Professional learning that will be aligned with the compass and focused to promote the skilled use of data. Using what we have learned to create safe and supportive environments for our students and staff. Working to ensure that communication with all stakeholders is clear, consistent, and ongoing. Developing standard operating procedures to ensure there is consistency and coherence across the system and in the implementation of the compass. We thank you, members of the board, for your time and for your attention this evening.
Thank you very much for the presentation. So now, do we have any questions from members of the board? Do you have something you'd like to share?
Since there are no questions, I just, again, can't overemphasize the support of Draw and the work that they do as they have been described as the headlights, I believe, of the system. But I want to acknowledge these three individuals in front of us for the work that they've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item is M. M as in Mary. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is part two of the work session of the fiscal year 2023 State Capitol Budget Request. The first part of the work session was earlier today, and at this time, I call on Dr. Scriven, Mr. Dixon, and Mr. Saris.
So good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Hen, who I believe is virtual, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. This is round two. We even received some questions between round one and round two. I think I would like to start out, Mr. Dixon, if, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair. I, I think that Dr. Hager had presented us with a, a pretty relevant question that we would like to address first and foremost, or just ask Dr. Hager to present that question so that we can respond appropriately, and then I would turn it over to you. But her, her question was one that came up in a previous board that I think it's relevant to.
Sure, certainly. Yes, if Dr. Hager could present her question again, and then we can all benefit from the answer.
Thank you, yes. I, I sent it by email because I, I arrived late to the earlier session. I don't know if it had been already been asked. So what I sent by email was at the last Board of Ed meeting, Senator Chris West proposed what he called a win-win solution, which would be to extend the 15-year MyEyePass plan to 16 years and add $32 million to the total cost, which by percent, when you're looking at the enormous dollar price tag, is a very small amount. So with this, he said, we could complete all of the specified replacements and renovations listed in MyEyePass and also replace Towson and Delaney. And so that was what we heard last time, and I was very intrigued by that because I, you know, we all, I think we all love a win-win, of course. So my questions were, were his calculations correct? Is this actually accurate? And with the exception of adding a year to a 15-year plan, making it 16 years, and adding $32 million, based on all of your experience, are there any other downsides to this approach?
So good evening, and thank you for your question. I'm not going to comment on his question, whether it's right or wrong, but I'll give you a background so that there's better understanding of what we are talking about. So MyEyePass indicated that we have need of 4.7 billion, and the only funding available is 2.5 billion, or somewhere in that neighborhood, 4.7 and 2.5. So to begin with, we have a deficit of $1.2 billion meeting all of our needs. So that's one piece. The second piece is, this 2.5 billion that we have, it assumes that we'll maximize capital fund efficiency. And what that means is that for every dollar that county puts in, we are able to get states' dollars, which is 1.5 of county dollars. If we don't achieve that, then we are not making full use of our money. So that's the second piece. The third piece is that capital efficiency for that individual project has to be maintained also. And what that means is that the quality of the building, that's number one, its ability to provide the program that we have developed, that is all maintained. So it sounds simple at the surface, but when you go deeper into it, then it becomes complex. Also, while we are doing this over the next 15 years, we have to make sure that our rate of building degradation is less than our rate of building improvement. And if we don't do that, then we'll get into the same situation that we are in. We will never be able to catch up. Once we take care of that initial 15 years, and this is the golden opportunity for us to do it, because the Build to Learn Act, those funds are coming. So using funds that we are getting from county in an efficient manner and utilizing those new funds as soon as we can will go a long way. And the notion that I indicated in our previous conversation, that renovation is not good enough. Some of the buildings that we have completed using old buildings and renovating it are the most architecturally impressive buildings. And at least one of the projects that I see here, that'll be a dream project, in terms of preservation of historical integrity. So that's why you see that most of the conversation is from one architect and engineering team to other architects and engineering team. We just don't get funds because that's how we want. Every elected official wants best for the school, for their, their school. Every board member wants best for their school. But when you look at the school in a comprehensive manner, in the system, which is what we are all trying to do, then it's a totally different story. And let's all work together, that's my appeal, to make use of these funds for the benefit of all schools. And the quality of end product, whether we renovate or we build new, it will not be second-class. And that's the, and that's the assurance you have from our team. I don't know if I answered your question or not. I said a lot of things. Hopefully it helps.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Looks like we, and I'll go around and order Ms. Joe's. And if anyone else has any questions, just raise up your red thing so I can put you down. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. We know that capital budget plans are typically done in 10-year increments, just like the census data is done every 10 years. That is typical industry standards. What year was the Stonelee Elementary School renovated? Do you have that data? And also describe historically how you would preserve Towson High School per Maryland Historical Society guidelines and what that could accomplish.
That's a very good question. So the second piece is what I talked a little bit about it. In the schools that are covered under historical trust, they have another layer of process. We are guided by the process that Maryland Historical Society has, which involves intensive community participation in addition to regular participation. So there'll be a series of meetings with the community, and that will present different options and cost. And that'll help us, and whatever community wants, that's what they will get, more than likely. And in most of the cases that we have dealt, communities are split among themselves. Some want to preserve the historical architecture, some don't. Some want to build new buildings, but get pieces of the old historical building and incorporate in that. And we try to do all of that within the availability of funding.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. And just as a follow-up question, you know, just in this meeting, a board member was lamenting about how BCPS couldn't pay for $80,000 of paving of multipurpose court, and yet we are willing to write off 20 to 40 million dollars. And that is what leads to these dilapidated facilities. You, you think it's just a small dollar amount, 40 dollars, 60 million dollars, not 60 dollars. And therefore, in my opinion, to disregard the recommendations of this independent and unbiased study, which is looking at all 175 schools without implementation or consideration, is not only inequitable, but is also not aligned with the goal of how capital budget analysts like me would be allocating capital dollars independently. So all schools get touched by our capital dollars. Also, when you're talking about that additional 40 to 60 million dollars, would that mean that in our capital budget request, schools like I see here, Battle Monument, Southwest Academy, Randalls Town High, which have approximately 2 million dollars in roof replacements, would that be then deferred back?
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
And, and I think MyEyePass has done it in a, in a detailed manner about every school in the system.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Offerman.
Mr. Dixon, I'm going to ask you to repeat something you probably said during the four o'clock session, and that is, for the case of Delaney and Towson High School, both, incorrect, I'm wrong, because of Phil, because the feasibility study says that it is more efficient to replace, excuse me, to renovate and add, in the case of Towson, and renovate is Delaney, that, that, that we would lose, we would lose substantial state money if we went ahead and did this. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. You know, because we did the feasibility study, which is another product by independent architect, and, and they believe that on a 40-year life cycle basis, renovation addition is more economical. So if we still pursue replacement, state will not fund 60% of replacement cost. They will fund 60% of renovation cost minus 15% penalty for going on our own. So state guidelines are quite complex, and they are detailed, and it's available to anybody on IAC website. In our conversation with state, they have always indicated that they like to preserve buildings, they like to work with the buildings and, and, and save them. So it's good, and I think it's win-win for everybody. The notion that the renovation is a second-grade project is fundamentally flawed. It has no, no merit to it, and I just want to emphasize that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, looks like it was Mr. Kuhn, correct? And then, there's a hand over here. Okay, Ms. Rowe and Ms. Mack, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to go back again to the feasibility study for Towson. I'm looking at it right now. There are three options. And option number two, which is a major renovation addition, costs more than building the new school. So I, I'm, I'm at a loss. When you're sitting there telling us we're going to lose money, I'm confused when I'm looking at the documents that have been provided where it shows 40-year life costs for option two, major renovation at 419 million, and 40-year life cycle cost for option three replacement at 408 million. So please explain that to me.
So there, there may be errors in the number. 40-year life cycle cost is 387 million, 419 and 480. So what numbers are included in here, I don't know. I can check that, and I can get back to you to make sure that these numbers are accurate. You may have, we may have an older copy, so I'll get that, I'll check that, and I'll send it to you.
All right, well, thank you. Now, moving on to Delaney. I asked this question, but we ran out of time again, so I'm going to go back again. I'm looking at the renovation option. Option one is 295,000 square feet. Option two is 316,000 square feet. And option three is 329,000 square feet. They are all different, and their costs are all different, as we would expect. So how do we compare these when two of them are renovations and one's a replacement?
So that answer is, I'll try to give you that answer. State has guidelines for maximum and minimum square footage for spaces. Architects try to fit, meet those requirements within different options. So in some options, you can fit the educational space requirement in a smaller space overall envelope. In some, in the, when we build a new building, we go to the maximum that state allows. So the same educational needs of the space, and, and I'll give you a simple example. If there's a classroom size of 750 feet, and the state guidelines is 650 to 850, we meet the state guidelines by keeping the 750 classroom. But if we were to build that school, we'll try to max that space to get that, that, that is 850 square foot. So naturally, that will cost more. Also, there are several spaces in the building that can be optimized in existing building to save cost. And that's the work that architectural and engineering team does for next several, 12 to 18 months, to get to the space requirement at the minimum cost. And that's why you see that the cost of actual renovation, meeting all the space requirement, meeting all the codes, is a lot less than building a new building.
Okay, so I got to follow up on that real quick, because if you look at the Towson feasibility study, the square feet are exactly the same for all three options.
That's not correct. That's a typo. So that, that you will get to the new report?
This is all I have.
Yeah.
Because the numbers, the numbers that I have is 263,086 for option one, 277,455
for option two, and 279,409. So you may have an older version, I'll get you the latest version.
Yeah, this is all I have to go from.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, it looks like we have a question from Ms. Rowe.
Okay, so I would like updated versions of those documents, too, because I had similar questions as to what Mr. Kuhn had. And I would also like the documentation for where the IAC made the decision that somehow we would lose 15% funding based on the feasibility studies. I was unable to find that in the documentation anywhere. So if you have that, either the meeting, they discussed it, or the documentation where they made comments on that, or I would like to see their reasoning for that, because it's difficult to be prepared for a meeting with questions when the documents we have don't have the accurate numbers. But so if we could get those documents with the accurate numbers, and if I could see the IAC decision that you mentioned, based on the feasibility study, I'd like to be able to process that. Thank you.
So the right term is IAC guidelines, that is, their administrative guidelines, and that's where they share as to how, how much they will, what their share will be. So their share of construction for renovation or replacement is 61%, okay? 61% of the 61% of the construction cost is state share. In order to justify replacement, they need a feasibility study saying that it is more cost-effective to do replacement. If we cannot justify that, and they need it from an architect, independent architect, licensed, and it is reviewed by the state architect. And if we cannot provide that in feasibility study, then they do not. Section 203 of state administrative guidelines, Regulation 23.03.02.03B, and I'll share that. Yeah, yeah, I'll share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, looks like it's a question from Ms. Mack.
Mr. Dixon, I'm going to go back to Sparrow's Point for a minute. I know you said this, and I just don't have it in my notes. I'm looking at the FY 2022 state capital budget request and the FY 2023 state capital budget request. Neither one of them speaks to Sparrow's Point at all.
Good question. So the Sparrow's Point part comes in the Southeast Area Study in the county capital plan, FY 22. So if you remember in the My I-Pass presentation, they wanted us to go deeper into the Sparrow's Point and Southeast Area Schools, and also a new school for Northeast and Central Park. So the point that I made in my last conversation is that if we don't use money effectively and keep losing that 61% minus 15%, then we won't have funds. There will be enough funds to do other projects, which may be Sparrow's Point and Northeast projects.
But my question is this, because I do see on the FY 2022 county, county capital budget request, I do see the $500,000 for the assessment of a Northeast or Central High School and the Southeast Area High School. But eight years from now, some people on this board won't be on this board. And there might not be somebody on the board who's going to ask a question about Sparrow's Point. So where is the commitment to Sparrow's Point?
That's part of the My I-Pass recommendation.
Right, but the board's not going to approve or not approve My I-Pass. They're going to approve this sheet.
Yes.
There's nothing on here on Sparrow's Point.
Because the options have not been developed yet. The money just became available, and that $500,000 purpose of that money is to do study and come up with recommendations. It is not included in state plan, state request, because we do not have options yet.
So what, how long would that process take?
Well.
Indefinitely, best case, worst case.
It could take six months, it could take eight months.
No, I'm talking about, like, to get it on the sheet where it's memorialized.
Okay, so the first part is to come up with options, and that's what you see, that $500,000 in county, in county plan, okay? Once we know what the options are, then they will be included in state request. So in next couple of years, hopefully next year, when we come to you, we'll have some options for your consideration.
And then they would have to be prioritized and funded, correct?
In My I-Pass, they have prioritized before Delaney. Their ranking is right after Towson.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information. I just, it concerns me that we don't see it on these sheets.
Yeah, because we don't know what the options are. Once we know the options, then we'll, you'll see it in the state request.
I understand. I just, I guess I'd like to see a placeholder, but if that's not the process, so be it.
Thank you. Next, you have Mr. McMillian.
Mr. Dixon, even at my age, I used to be a very, very trusting individual. I'm becoming more and more cynical as I stay in this position.
I understand that, because I'm aging, too. I totally understand that.
So with all this information that's floating out there, this conflicting type of information, how do I know, how do we know that some career politician or some power broker hasn't influenced the outcome of cannon design to get what they want out of it?
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's a good question. My answer to you is that county, at the request of school board, conducted search for an independent consultant. Some of us were part of the interview panel, lot of members from our group, and county from day one has been totally transparent and totally honest about it. We have collaborated, superintendent's team has collaborated with CE's team, and there's, to my knowledge, there is absolutely no pressure from anybody to come up with that independent plan. The company has a history of doing hundreds of these studies throughout the country. They have asked the help of the best-known school construction funding expert that we know of in Maryland State, Dr. Lever. So it is as credible as you can get. So with, even with all the cynics and everything else, I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional questions?
Yes, Ms. Hen.
Oh, okay. So we have Ms. Hen, then Mr. Thomas, then Ms. Pastor. Yes, please go ahead, Ms. Hen.
Thank you. So this came up earlier. Good evening again, Mr. Dixon. The board is approving the FY 23 state capital request. We are not voting on the My I-Pass plan in its entirety. Is that correct, Mr. Dixon?
The board is approving FY 23 state capital plan. That's correct.
Thank you. And the plan has been updated to reflect the My I-Pass recommendations. Is that also correct?
The, if you remember, Ms. Hen, last year, we had included replacement of these two schools. So when we went to planning board, they wanted us to do a feasibility study. So county had provided funds for feasibility study in advance. As part of practice, feasibility study is done when we submit the plan, when the design is developed. So the purpose of planning board was to look at the result of feasibility study before they take their action. And just to remind you, while board approves the plan, board has no fiscal authority. We are dependent on fiscal, on all the funding from county and from state. So we have to comply with all of the requirements from county and all of the requirements from state. And they all have their processes. Did I answer your question, Ms. Hen?
You did, and I think Ms. Rowe asked my question regarding wanting to see the documentation from the IAC regarding the requirement of the state match based on the feasibility studies, recommendations.
Yeah.
And I would also love to see the complete feasibility study rather than just the executive summary, also for those documents to be made public, as well as Lansdowne, in addition to Towson and Delaney. Because I also question the documents, because originally, the board received a recommendation, and this was on May of 2018, May 9, 2018, for a limited renovation of Lansdowne, which the board, at that time, Mrs. Causey and I served, the board voted eight to three to reject the limited renovation of Lansdowne. And I imagine that was based on a feasibility study, to which the board rejected, instead requesting a new school for Lansdowne. So I would like to compare that process with the process for Towson and Delaney, to see how the state approval followed suit, and what the IAC's funding is for that, and also to see the feasibility studies to compare for the three schools.
Yeah, so.
And the, my concern with that is that the board applied the same rationale, given the condition of Lansdowne, as we did to Delaney and Towson, because for the past five years, the board has approved a state capital request that included replacements for those two schools, based on not only the need for seats, particularly with Towson, but the conditions of both of those schools. So if we.
It's time, Ms. Hen.
If we apply the decisions differently, then my concern is, what is the justification other than political? Because it would seem to be.
That's time, Ms. Hen. Ms. Brussels said that's time, yeah.
So may I?
Thank you. Go ahead. Yes, please, Mr. Dixon.
So we are mixing several different things here. Let me, let me go one step at a time. Lansdowne project was, originally, it was included as renovation project. So once you submit a renovation project, it does not require any feasibility study. We designed renovation. It was turned down by, by the board. It was never approved. So then, it started as a new project. The new project included replacement. Once we included replacement, in order to qualify for state funding, state requires feasibility study. And that's how the feasibility study was done. And feasibility study was accepted by state because it recommended replacement. So that was a totally different process. Every project is considered on its own merit. So just because Lansdowne was approved by state, it doesn't mean that any other project will be approved. So we did the same process. As a matter of fact, we forwarded the feasibility study to expedite it, and feasibility study does not justify replacement. So when feasibility study doesn't justify replacement, that means state will not fund 61% of the replacement cost. They will only fund 61% of the renovation cost, minus 15% of that as a punitive part, because we decided on our own to replace the, to school. So what that does, that puts additional burden on county funding. And when you compute that, that comes to approximately 20 to 30 million dollars for each high school. Anytime county has to pay for replacement, when state did not approve the feasibility study or did not accept the feasibility study, then we have to. The county has to put the additional money, which means that money comes from other projects. And that money can be used to leverage additional estate funds for other projects. So that's my response. If it's not clear, I'll be able to talk about it again.
Great, thank you. It looks like next is Mr. Thomas. Can I go ahead, please?
Can I ask one quick follow-up?
No, Ms. Hen, your time expired. So it's Mr. Thomas's turn now.
Thank you. I just want to remind board members and the public that we have an obligation to all 111,000 kids here in BCPS. And for us to be willing to give up millions of dollars, as Mr. Dixon has been saying, tens of millions of dollars to prioritize the needs of .03% of that population, of 3,421 students, out of the 111,000 students that go to Delaney and Towson, I just can't see how that is an equitable approach to an education. I can't see how that is a fiscally responsible decision for us to be making as board members. Because that money that we'd be losing, that would be from the state capital that we would get if we had a replacement instead of a renovation, is what could be going towards better stadiums, could be going towards better roofs, could be not allowing the 41 deficiencies or deferrals that I see on the My, one of the My I-Pass reports that would occur if we did replace Delaney and Towson. And so for individuals like Ms. Hen and Ms. Causey, who represent the Towson and Delaney areas, I understand why you're advocating for these schools. They're within your district, and I completely understand that. But for people that don't represent those areas, think of your schools. Think of the schools that you were elected to represent, and what's going to be taken from them if we are allocating more resources to Delaney and to Towson. I really wish I could vote on this matter, because my vote would have been a decision for all students in BCPS. I would 100% work with this capital budget to ensure that we are allocating funds to all of the schools. And, Mr. Dixon, I thank you so much for continuing to hear the same questions, oh, thank you, the same questions over and over again from board members, and getting the same answers back and forth. Thank you so much, because I think this multi-year improvement plan for all schools is the best way. And you mentioned earlier, this is a step in the right direction going forward. This is a step to prevent things like the, what the PTA had to pay for. This is a step to prevent these structural damages in our schools from not being addressed over the years. This allows for every school to be addressed. And I just think that it's important that we are thinking about all 111,000 students. Ah, thank you.
That's time. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Pastor.
Mr. Dixon and Dr. Scriven, I would like for you to just sort of pull this in. We know we're not voting on My I-Pass. We're voting on what we have before us between state and county, et cetera. So I would love to see all of these schools get it. Certainly, I have a special thing about Delaney, I admit that, in terms of wanting to see it get what it needs. So I just admit that upfront. But I also have a thing about a number of the other schools that are on this list, whether they're in my area or someone else's area. So I have two things here in one. It always comes down to a moral issue for me. How do we, and Christian just stated it, so I'm not going to reiterate. So I need to understand how we hold off for 15 years. Give me an answer, so that I'd be willing to give up for 15 years, schools that I know of are also falling apart and need some extra extras to it in many ways, as well as the social-emotional for the childrenhood in those schools. So I need that kind of help. I've got the numbers here in my little notebook about what people said in the surveys and what they were willing to give up, access to education equity and capacity. 100% said that that was more important to them. Help me understand, to sift away, and then what Ms. Mack said, some of the schools that I need you to explain that a little bit better for me, because some of the schools that we, that are on My I-Pass that need support are not on these lists. So can you just sort of narrow it down, nail it for me on that moral level, as well as that real level?
So I'll try. So this new study that has been done, and I know we are not talking about My I-Pass, but this is the most comprehensive and the latest study that we have that has been done. What this study is saying, that you have a need of 4.7 billion-dollar worth of improvements to get all the schools back in acceptable condition. And that then they look at it, the cash flow coming in, you only are getting 2.5 billion dollars that's coming in. So what that does, that forces us to look at as to what premium projects, what they call, should be managed carefully. And these two projects are part of those premium projects, along with 13 other projects. And there's a list that's given to you in My I-Pass.
Under those lists.
That's right. So if we manage those projects right, which is what we are talking about right here, then we can stretch that 2.5 billion dollar to take care of all the backlog of capital needs. It's just simplifying to that. If we don't do that, and why did that backlog happen? If you go back before 10 years, county funded schools for our future about seven, eight years ago, that's when the large amounts of county money started coming. Before that, the funding was not at that level, for whatever reason, I don't know. So that gave us a chance to air-condition all the schools, that gave us a chance to talk, take care of all the seats that were needed in elementary schools. All along, everybody knew that high school is a big problem. Because of the size of high school, you're not talking about 30 million, 40 million-dollar project, you're talking about 100, 150 million-dollar project. So now, everybody kept pushing can down the road. This county executive, really, we have to give them a lot of credit for coming up with the concept for independent study, to see how we can solve their problem. On top of that, Build to Learn Act money is coming. So this is our golden opportunity to carefully use our funds and take care of as many buildings as we can, so that we can get to a point where we don't get in this hole again, where we don't have to have, you know, then from there on, we may have the luxury of building a lot of new schools. Then from there on, we may have the luxury of building a lot of new schools. So that's in nutshell that I can share. I don't know if I answered your question or not.
And I could just interject. I've been quiet. I've been listening. I've been looking and taking some notes as we've been going through this. This is very simple. We don't make the rules. There's guidelines that we are mandated to follow. As a result of requesting new construction for Delaney and Towson, it was required to do a feasibility study. We did not do the study. We had nothing to do with the study. The recommendations of the study are the recommendations. If we do not adhere to the recommendations, we are not being fiscally responsible. It's that simple.
Well put together. It's that simple.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay. So we have, it looks like it's, we have Dr. Hager, Mr. Kuhn, and Ms. Causey. Okay. And I have a question also because I haven't asked one yet. I just want to make sure I have this down. So go after me. Okay, thank you. So I guess it's more of a comment. One, the only schools I've really been hearing about are only Delaney and Towson. If I didn't know better, I would think that nobody here represented any other schools other than those two. That's all I've heard about. We represent a lot of schools and members here from all over the district. And I've not heard members speak about any other schools or the ramifications or the impact that this could have on any of the schools in their areas, which, as we heard, it would be widespread. It looks like it would be a widespread impact across the county, not one area of the county, but across the county, where development or renovations or anything wouldn't happen for 15 years, regardless of when the school was built. So that's just a little jarring to me that members are only focused on two schools as opposed to all schools and students at only certain schools as opposed to all of our students. Because I haven't heard anybody mention any other schools. I did hear Sparrow's Point, but I haven't heard anyone mention anything else. I believe Ms. Pastor, I did hear Ms. Pastor, I think, mention another school. Okay, thank you. So my other question would be, who's, I heard you say that we'd lose state money. And I want to know, what, who would cover the loss of that state money? Is that something that would be recoverable or would we just lose it?
So if we decide to build a new school, and it is not justified by feasibility study, then county will have to put up the tab.
The county would? And how much would that be?
That'd be, depending on the size of school and all that, but in our rough calculation, it's anywhere from $20 to $30 million of additional county funds.
So not only would schools for the, a lot of schools for the next, sorry, this is just, so not only would these schools not be developed for 15 years, we would also be out of, you said approximately almost $30 million?
Yes.
Dollars?
Yes.
That the county would have to cover, which is taxpayer dollars?
Yes.
So that two schools could have a new school?
That would be per school, though, not just for one.
Per school? So you're talking about $60 million?
Yes.
Also, also, the complication is that $60 million is used to leverage additional estate funding. So future projects will be impacted. So if you vote for a new school, what you are voting for, potentially not having a Northeast school, potentially not having a Sparrow's Point or whatever solution we come up with. So this is a complex issue.
And being out of $60 million.
Yes. And then at some point, our funding partner will say, you are not making fiscally prudent decisions.
And that's part of what we just said in here, being fiscally sound and making fiscally smart decisions, so.
But I do have to say, because, you know, we have students in every school, that no matter what the product is, whether it's renovation or it's new school, it will not be second-rate product. And that's the commitment that we have. We will not build a building that does not meet all the codes, that does not look good, and that's not like just new inside the school. We would not do that. So there's nothing to be concerned about that, and I have to repeat that.
I appreciate it.
Because we have done that repeatedly. And I gave an example to Ms. Mack in our previous conversation. We built Catonsville Elementary School, okay? We built it at half the price, and it is as good or better than any other elementary school. We built Stonely with addition and renovation. It is just as good as any other elementary school. So folks that are listening out here, I want them to know that we hear you. We hear your passion. And we'll do everything that we can to make sure that you get the same product that any other kid does.
Thank you for that. And just last, because I know I probably have 15 seconds left. How do you build a new Towson when that's a historic site and it's governed by the Maryland Historical Society? Because everyone's saying just build a brand-new Towson.
It's not that easy because that process will go on for a year during the design process. There'll be folks from community that'll be looking at it. There'll be folks from Maryland Historical Trust and Baltimore County's Landmark Commission that's going to be involved in it. So we just cannot go and demolish a building like that.
Thank you. Next is Dr. Hager. Okay, thank you. Mr. Kuhn.
Thank you. Mr. Dixitt and Mr. Scriven, or Dr. Scriven, we keep coming back to this 15-year number. And I asked some questions, and they're available, I think, online, I hope, for everyone to read. But I still need an explanation as to what kind of renovation we're even talking about. Because in the last presentation we had, I re-watched part of it today, Cannon spoke of this refresh renovation every 15 years. Every single school is going to get a refresh. I don't have any idea what that means. Because I asked questions about mechanical renovation, which is something that was actually on one of the exhibits you provided. And then we're talking about massive renovations of these high schools.
That's time.
So can you please explain?
Sure. So I think we have provided that response in writing that was provided by Cannon. But for this audience here, what they are trying to say is not that you renovate the whole building. In the 15 years after the building has been renovated or built, there are systems that need replacement. There are changes in technology that's needed. There are finishes that are needed. And just about every school in 15 years will have obsolete technology. So some school may need $5 million worth of renovation. Some may need $20 worth of renovation. Some may need less. And what they are trying to say, that in smart planning, you keep funds for that. We have schools that were built in the last 10 years. Dundalk High School is a good example. It needs an addition. We have built, we have schools that are already more than their capacity, and they were built in the last 10 years. So where does the funding come for that school? It has to be part of this plan. So the painting might be needed. There may be roof. State funding, the state has a lifespan for eligibility of several systems that's 15 years. Mechanical systems, roofing. If you want to replace them, they will only participate if they are at least 15 years. So that's the number. That's where it came from. This notion that once you build the building, then you won't need anything for 15, 20 years, that's not right. It's flawed.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Causey.
Thank you. I had a question, Dr. Williams. It's been pointed out this evening that there are, that the board does not have accurate information related to the Towson and possibly the Delaney numbers. And Mr. Dixitt said he's going to get us the updated numbers. So.
We'll give you the latest version.
Excuse me, I'm speaking to Dr. Williams. So I had sent an email requesting.
Excuse me, Ms. Causey.
Yes, yes.
Again, I think that we should be respectful of our staff and everybody. Thank you.
Yep. So I had sent an email, and it was pointed out by someone else, and I'm not sure that we've got a conclusion on it, to get the full report and also have the full reports be available to the public. The Lansdowne feasibility and the Delaney and the Towson feasibility. And I would just say that the reason I'm focusing on those is because Towson and Delaney are the schools that have been waiting, that have been taken off of the list, where they had previously been on the list just months ago. So I'm just curious what the timeframe is.
So that question was asked by board members to the same team, and they responded about the feasibility study for Delaney. We do not have it at this time. The questions that you referenced, we do have, since several questions came after, a time period in which we like to have questions to respond. We are giving somewhat of a timeframe where we think those reports will be available. The fees, what you have is the executive summaries, but not the entire report. Those reports are not completed, is my understanding, at this time. When? We can say the middle of September. I don't want to put a time, but we know this is important. But we are not doing those reports. Those reports are outside of Baltimore County Public Schools. And I don't know, have you seen a feasibility report and the specificity within them?
Yes, the Lansdowne one was provided to us, but without the ability to print. And it said it's for internal use only.
Yeah, my understanding, talking to Mr. Dixitt, those reports are for architects to really understand and what's in them. I will question whether we would want to put that information on a public document for the public to see because of the specificity within those reports. It's almost like a map of a school. Do you want to put a map on a school on a webpage? No. These reports are very detailed. I think we need to really think about having those reports with the specificity out there in the public domain.
Thank you for that response. So, but the board could receive Delaney and Towson's completed feasibility study in the same fashion that we received Lansdowne, which was electronically.
Sure. Again, that's what the question that was raised earlier. And Mr. Dixon and team said, you know, we don't have those reports, and we're happy. The question was putting them on board docs and making them public documents. I really want the board to really think if that's the direction that they really want to go with having that level of specificity out there on the webpage. So as soon as we get them, we'll be happy to share those reports with the board.
Thank you. And I'm not sure that you were here when Mr. Dixitt and Mr. Kuhn were addressing the numbers and that there were some errors, and maybe there was a prior.
I don't know. I'm going to check, and I'll give you the.
Yes, I was here with that exchange. And Mr. Dixitt did say he will review those documents and make sure the board has the most recent document.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Ms. Hen was waiting.
Oh, okay. I will, excuse me, how much time do I have? Okay. So, Policy of 100 Equity, "The Board is committed to fostering the success of every student in every school by creating and maintaining environments that are safe, diverse, and inclusive." And the Board of Education also is committed to providing for every student "the highest quality 21st century education in a safe, secure, and positive environment conducive to high levels of teaching, learning, and student engagement." The issue is not how to save money in one community in order to leverage that money. The other issue is when we're talking about the MyI Pass statements of reasonable renovation schedule cycles and BCPS equity priorities, Towson and Delaney are not being served equitably under those criteria.
Okay, you can go ahead, Ms. Hen.
Thank you. I wanted to address a couple of the comments that were made. One is, again, this notion that Towson and Delaney are being isolated or prioritized inequitably, when that is not the case. If you look at capital investments over the last 20 years, those have totaled $571 million, of which Towson has seen $0 capital spending. The last capital project was its renovation in 1999, despite it being one of the oldest facilities with one of the worst facility scores and one of the most overcrowded schools in the whole county.
Ms. Hen, you're running up on time.
Delaney is in a similar situation. Also, with regards to the 41 school projects that are deferred beyond 15 years.
Ms. Hen, your time is up.
Towson currently has two years between renovations, as do 17.
Ms. Hen, your time. It's time, Ms. Hen. Yeah, your time, sorry, you had some time left, but Ms. Brussels just told us that the time was up, so. Is there anyone else who would like to speak or has any questions? No? Okay. None. It looks like we are complete with item M. Thank you. Thank you both. Okay. The next is, that next item on the agenda is the opening of schools. Update number three, and for that, I call on Dr. Williams.
So, good evening, Board Chair Scott, Vice Chair Hen, and members of the board. Tonight, I want to present an update on our fall opening of schools. My team and I are excited to welcome students into our buildings on Monday, August 30. Already, our school and central office teams have gathered in preparation for inviting our learners to a new year. Working together, students, staff, and families, we know it will be a great year. Next slide, please. So you have heard me say before, "For our system, this year includes three specific areas of focus: healing, acknowledging last year and taking the lesson learned, supporting the social-emotional needs of students, staff, and one another; recovering, re-establishing bonds, relational trust, effective practices and processes to help us build our collective capacity to serve and support students across schools; and rebuilding, taking the opportunity to refine and implement a standard of excellence where we focus on a limited number of priorities that yield maximum results." So our new reality includes shifting metrics. We've said from the beginning that BCPS will prioritize the health and safety of staff and students. We remain committed to coordinating with the scientific community as we implement a safe return to school. If evolving health and safety conditions warrant more stringent mitigation strategies, BCPS will continue to work with health partners to monitor health metrics and, if needed, implement a modified plan to address potential COVID-related issues. Our goal is to preserve and protect five-day in-person learning. BCPS will not close school buildings and move to fully virtual instruction unless ordered to do so by the government officials. And if the state or county orders reduce capacity in school buildings, we have developed a plan to respond in a way that ensures high-quality teaching and learning continues in a safe manner for staff and students. Next slide, please. So as we stated, let me pause for a minute. I have too many things open. So this slide is very important. It says, "We stated our priority is preserving and protecting five-day in-person instruction through layered mitigation strategies that include universal masking, access to vaccination clinics for students, full vaccination, or weekly testing for staff, physical distancing, hand washing, respiratory etiquette, and healthy operations. If health conditions warrant, additional layers of mitigations may be added." We are implementing a process to expand virtual learning program enrollment to include students who meet identified health criteria. Criteria will be determined in conjunction with health professionals on a case-by-case basis. This information has been shared with Team BCPS. This infographic is intended to share our best thinking in collaboration with our health experts. This process. This process is not linear. As of today, the CDC no longer identifies a specific number of school closures. We will continue to monitor our metrics daily and in consultation with our health and government partners, we will make and communicate decisions based on a variety of considerations, including school transmission, continuity of learning, and community transmission. Rest assured, we will continue to share information as it becomes available. So if I may, explain this graph a little bit. If individual cases are reported, of course, with consultation with health experts, then five days in-person learning remains in place. Contact tracing will occur, and affected individuals may be subject to quarantine. If group of cases in a school is reported, working with our health experts, five days in-person learning remains in place, contact tracing will occur, and affected individuals and/or groups may be subject to quarantine and localized virtual learning. For an example, if an entire third grade class is on extended quarantine, instruction may continue if that class and their teacher all move to virtual learning. Please note that these decisions will be made in consultation with our health consultants and experts. If multiple groups or classes in a school are reported, working with our health experts, five-day in-person learning remains in place, contact tracing will occur, and affected individuals and/or groups may be subject to quarantine and localized virtual instruction. If state and county officials mandate reduced capacity in schools, working with our health experts, students will receive both in-person and virtual instructions. Support will be provided to students during virtual instructional days. There will be no concurrent teaching. And if the state and county officials mandate building closures, then school-based virtual learning using Google Classroom and Schoology will occur." Next slide, please. Knowing that exponential change is going to continue moving fast and furious towards us, I can commit to you that we will remain steadfast in our focus on four main priorities in service to staff and students. We will provide professional learning and support to Team BCPS to ensure that we attend to the social emotional wellness for staff and students, accelerating learning for student progress, increasing data literacy to support our efforts, and collectively committing to a standard of excellence. We know that this upcoming year will be filled with challenges, and we must be clear in our effort to heal, rebuild, and recover. We also know that our staff is equipped with skills, knowledge, and experience to navigate through a pandemic. This has certainly been a journey with more to come. However, I am confident that if we stay committed to a strong practice of focus on students and clear communication, that we will continue to do what is right for our students who need us. Next slide. So as you know, part of the application for implementation and accountability for the use of Federal American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds, also known as ARP, ESER, is community input. In addition to focused group interactions and input, a survey was utilized to collect opinions and input for the targeted use of these critical financial resources. This survey included both State of Maryland and current BCPS strategic priorities being considered to address student needs, accelerating student reengagement, supporting mental health and socio-emotional health, and addressing the impact of unfinished learning. Next slide. There were 4,630 respondents who completed the survey. Seventy-four percent of the respondents were parents and guardians. Twenty-four percent of the respondents were employees, and the remaining respondents were students and community members. This graph shows the relationships to BCPS and associated grade levels. Next slide. Respondents were asked to share the degree to which they felt the identified issues were current needs of schools as a result of or in response to the pandemic. Eighty-eight point nine percent of respondents identified accelerating student reengagement was a high or moderate priority. Ninety-three point three percent of the respondents identified supporting mental and socio-emotional health as a moderate or high priority. And ninety-one point five percent of respondents identified addressing the impact of unfinished learning as a moderate or high priority. Next slide. This slide depicts the level of support for the following items. Expanded summer school programs, acquisition of curriculum materials for schools, tutoring services, strategic partnerships to support teaching and learning, compensatory services for special needs students, socio-emotional learning curriculum, expanded use of technology for students and staff. Tutoring services, acquisition of curriculum materials, and compensatory services for students who receive special ed services receive the highest level of support for funding. Next slide. This slide depicts the level of support for the following items. Expansion of counselors, social workers, and health professionals in schools. Support for the BCPS virtual learning program. HVAC improvements across the district, PPEs and other safety materials and measures. Extended instructional school day. Additional instructional support staff in elementary schools. Additional supports us, excuse me, additional staff in secondary schools. Additional staff in secondary schools, additional instructional support in elementary school, and HVAC improvements across the district receive the highest levels of support for funding. We also received 1,998 responses recommending additional areas of focus for these funds. These areas include free meals, grief counseling, and compensation. We also, we all are committed to continuing to work with the stakeholder groups over the next two years as we refine our plan. So we will continue to update the board, our community, and Team BCPS during these changing times. We also will share additional information that we received from our Maryland Health Department, State Superintendent, and/or Maryland State Department of Education, and our local health departments and health advisory group. Our partnership is critical to assuring a safe and successful year for all of our students. That concludes this report.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And it looks like that was item N, which was an update on the opening of schools, and then we added item O, is the discussion of the opening of schools. So, any questions for the discussion of opening of schools? Mr. McMillian, and then Ms. Rowe.
Dr. Williams, as a condition of receiving this round of ESER relief funds, is there a mandate that masks are mandatory?
So the recommendation and support about the mask came from our health experts. And with that, in terms of the several meetings we've had about layer protection, and as we continue with pushing for vaccination, the next part of a layer protection, and having many conversations with them and our union leaders, was the next step in mandating masks or weekly testing. We're talking about staff, I'm assuming. Masks and mandating weekly testing for those who choose not to share.
So the federal government hasn't mandated that to receive this money, we have to require masks to be worn?
Not that I'm aware of at this time. You raised a good question, though. There's been a lot of conversation from the federal government, and that's why we talk about changing metrics in terms of being flexible. That has not been a mandate from the federal government at this point.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Rowe.
So the state of emergency that the county executive declared today, does that substantially change anything in this report? Or are you still examining that?
So the announcement from our county executive was released today. I believe there, in that announcement, it talks about conversations with the county council on the upcoming meeting. And as I have always been in communication with our county executive, and likewise, I'm sure, he will weigh in or provide additional information. As of right now, I don't have any additional information based on his announcement.
Okay. And if you could clarify, the chart that has the if/then options, under if state-county officials mandate reduced capacity in buildings, then both in-person and virtual learning, does that mean that you have the cohorts in students, and all of those students will be in-person on some days and virtual on other days to lower the number of students in the building? Or will there be a situation where parents will be able to select all virtual and some parents will be able to select hybrid?
So that really speaks to what we did this past year, where we had some form of hybrid. We have made a commitment not to do concurrent, and so there may be a conversation based on what's happening in the community that may be impacting schools where the recommendation, particularly from our health experts, may say to reduce capacity. So if we do that, we will look at some kind of A-B day or some form of that, based on how it's impacting that school, once we know what that may mean.
Okay.
Reduced capacity, more distancing, those are all those factors we will have to take in consideration.
So the scenario that we're trying to avoid is students who are virtual attending at home, having the same teacher who's also simultaneously attempting to teach children physically in the classroom?
Yes, that's what we are trying to avoid. There's been, now, that's not a new concept. I only have been here for two years. But that's not a new concept where a student may need to be, who attends school and may need to have some kind of virtual instruction, and there's some mechanism for that student to watch what's happening in the classroom. But what we did last year, this past year, we had the concurrent. And for those who visited schools with me and visited classrooms, you saw there, our teachers really worked hard to maintain that. That is something we're trying to avoid, to have that concurrent teaching, where you have students present in the room and students at home, and the teacher is trying to manage both.
Okay, so is the reason that we're trying to avoid that is because the instructional outcomes are not equivalent?
We're trying, based on our partnerships and feedback and our own observation, we want to do something completely different. And it's just not sentiments of Baltimore County. Those are those conversations I've had with my colleagues across the state, across the nation, where most of us were doing some kind of concurrent teaching. And that's a lot of work for our staff. So again, we're trying to avoid going down that path. And that's why when we put that option, that's looking at the version of having some students come a couple of days and some students not. It was more of a hybrid model, but not doing that concurrent like we did.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, because I think there, we have parents in the school system who would like as many possible different variations of options as possible. And I think it needs to be explained that not every option parents might want are equally effective at instruction, but also providing all of those options might not be feasible for staffing.
And remember, that graph was more of an if/then conditional state, that it really depends school by school, community by school by community, and if we see an impact of our district, we may have to make some recommendation as well. And so I just want to, we have learned a lot during this year and working with our health partners, working with our unions, working with central office. I felt it was appropriate to share what I have described as Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, just so folks see, if these situations are happening, here's our potential response after working with our health experts. And they have been great partners in this work. Again, we are not the health experts. They guide us, they make recommendations, and they support our decisions. And we've had weekly meetings. We continue to have weekly meetings as a district, a COVID-19 task force, as well as our partnerships with Johns Hopkins and University of Maryland.
So is it fair to say that what we're doing, opening schools right now with everyone wearing masks and the vaccine or testing mandates, that our health professionals feel that that's a safe way for us to proceed?
We have solicited their recommendations, and so hence why, a couple of weeks ago, in talking to each board member and talking to our unions, the next part was the layer of mask and then the vaccination. They guide us. The last thing, and even CDC is saying, we don't, we want to preserve and protect the in-person learning as much as possible. So that's what we're focusing on, in-person. Conditions change, we will then have to change in what we're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. So, Dr. Williams, there have been a lot of communications releases about the co-enrollment for students into the virtual learning program, and I've gotten a lot of messages from students asking what this means. And so what exactly does co-enrollment into the VLP and into someone's homeschool mean?
So we're still counting those students in their homeschool. They will have access to extracurricular activity. We didn't want students to feel they are now moved on to a whole new program and left to know. So that co-enrollment means exactly that. They will still have the rights and responsibilities as any other student who may be in-person versus the virtual learning program. Does that make sense?
Okay, so those students will still be doing virtual classes, but they will have access to the activities in the school?
Yes.
Okay. And there was the form to possibly join the co-enrollment or request co-enrollment. What are the requirements to be, like guaranteed admission to the co-enrollment, or to be accepted into the co-enrollment for VLP?
So I want to overemphasize this. Our former state superintendent and CDC is really pushing for in-person learning. And they gave us the opportunity to explore and expand our virtual learning. We have done some form of that in Baltimore County Public Schools. We have expanded that. Now we have to really look at, will those students, whoever are applying, would be successful? Are there particular needs or health needs? So the team, Dr. McComas and her team, Dr. E., they're looking at every request or appeal to try to respond to them in a timely manner. So again, we still want to push as much as in-person. We do recognize that there's some circumstances that we have to address. But we chose to expand our virtual learning program, and there seems to be interest in it. But based on what the feedback last year was, many of the stakeholders and their comments, it's kind of mixed, virtual, hybrid versus in-person. We all know, you know, having students in classes with teachers is the optimal goal that we're trying to make, but there's some circumstances that we need to provide. So we're looking at it case by case. We're still filling vacancies, not only for virtual, but also for opening of school. That's a national phenomenon, unfortunately, looking at just nearby districts. So we're taking it case by case when we look at those who are applying for our virtual learning program.
Okay. And are there any other, besides submitting the form, is there anything else that families can do to, who should they contact or anything else that they can do for their co-enrollment or to learn more about their status? How long after they submit the form? Should they, will they have to wait until they know if they'll be granted VLP admission?
Good question. I don't have all those answers. The team, as soon as they come in, they look at it and try to provide a response. We had a cutoff time, and we allow more to come to see. There may be some circumstances that need to be addressed. Remember, this is all based on staffing. So the more we bring in, the more we will have to adjust our staffing model and look at potentially hiring new staff. It's a little bit challenging. We thought we had a fixed number back in Dr. McComas. That time was June, July, we extended it. But things started happening in our community. Folks wanted to have this option, and so we're looking at it case by case. Again, the team, every day, the team is constantly looking at these appeals and trying to make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Dr. Hager, Mr. Kuhn, Ms. Causey and Matt.
I'm gonna ask my team of the health services, curriculum, school side to be ready for response. It's been a long day and I'm starting to, it feels like I'm losing my voice, so.
I just have two quick questions that are completely different. First has to do with the survey that was done on the ESSR funding. I've been very vocal about the fact that I, although I support the virtual learning program and the 15 minutes a day, I didn't think that it was, using ESSR funding was the right way to go for those efforts. And the survey also indicates at least those are, those are two areas where there was the least amount of support. Will this data be used to inform how we end up spending the money or is this just information gathering?
Well, it was just to support or to have us to rethink how we were using the funds. Now remember, the board made a motion to increase the day. And the resource was the CARES Fund. It was not in our budget, it was the CARES Fund to move forward with the 15 minutes. So I too was surprised about just the survey data around the 15 minutes. But remember, we, as a system, and George Duke is not here, but as a system, we have been talking about getting our student day comparable to other systems for a while. So that was a no-brainer about adding additional minutes to the day. So, you know, it does make a little bit of a longer day, but 15 minutes is not an hour.
Oh, no, again, I support that. I just, it's just the use of this funding in particular for those efforts is where I've always had a bit of a pause. But, so I just didn't know if you were going to use the survey data to make any decisions or if this was just information gathering?
I think I'm gonna use it both. But when you asked the question about the 15 minutes in the VLP, that was my response to the board to get the 15 minutes. And the only way of getting it is to use the CARES Fund. And I think it was described, then we have to look at that two years down the road about the funding source for that. The virtual learning program as well, that was, as we looked at our resources, as we looked at other places, that was one of the things that was pretty constant about doing something virtually. You've heard the feedback, I've heard the feedback about how virtual learning was successful for some students. We have to verify that, we want to see that that's the case. We still want the, try to champion for the in-person, for those activities that kids can come together. So I'm gonna look at it both ways. But again, responding to the needs of our county and the direction of the board is how I move with the VLP and the 15 minutes.
Thank you. And a completely different question has to do with communication. Probably the biggest thing I've been hearing is that parents are just wondering what's happening. And I know, I just want to know what kind of advice you have for folks. What I keep hearing is email Ms. Somerville, who is my personal public health hero back there. She can't respond to every single parent in the entire county. So what is the best advice you have for families trying to find out information about the COVID mitigation strategies as they return to school? Should they reach out to their principal or go to our website?
I think they should do both. I think the questions I was hearing was like, what will the school year feel like for my child? We have always instituted Sneaker Peak, Back to School Night, Back to School Night for families. And we encourage them to reach out to the schools because every school is slightly different. When it comes to the mitigation strategies, I think our principals have heard probably on a regular basis what to do, what to do. But they too can reach out to Deb Somerville if they feel they can't respond. Sorry, Deb. Thank you, Deb, for winning that leadership award. That's why you got that leadership award. But you know what I mean, the principal or the classroom teacher, but we're a team. So if they can't answer it, the question is forwarded to Deb or to Mike Zarchin to follow up. But I think, it almost feels like March when we opened up school and there was some reluctance. And as parents let their child come, they started to hear more about, well, what does it feel like? What does it look like? And, and the feedback from our principals and the feedback from the community superintendents, they started to see an increase each week. Maybe the same as we start this school year. As you recall, last year, we started all virtual. Now we're starting in-person and I'm sure that's why the questions are coming. But feel free to reach out to the schools if they don't know. Deb, Mike, the community superintendents will work together to try to get some answers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Kuhn?
Thanks. This is gonna be an easy question for you, Dr. Williams.
I appreciate that. It's been a long day. I'm gonna say that the second time.
Just following up from something Mr. Thomas just asked regarding dual enrollment. I just want to make sure that in no way are we going to double count students in our system since it's tied to funding. And to make sure that that's the case. So if someone's assigned in VLP and they're enrolled for activities in a school, there's no possibility that we're gonna count them enrolled in both schools, correct?
Our VLP program was reviewed by the state. I don't see how we could double or double count. Double counting feels a little funny to me.
Yeah, when I hear dual enrollment, I ask, I simply ask the question, that's all.
Oh, okay, so it's co-enrollment, co-enrollment.
Oh, co-enrollment.
Co-enrollment. We have dual enrollment. Okay, so let's.
All right, all right, I'm sorry, must have misheard.
Yeah, yeah, co-enrollment, dual enrollment.
You can understand my question now.
So let me clarify, dual enrollment like with our colleges.
Right.
Right? So dual enrollment, they're in our schools, they're also in CCDC, other places. Okay, co-enrollment, going back to Mr. Thomas, it sounded like his question. Would those students of VLP still have the rights and responsibility and access to extracurricular activities? Yes.
Thank you. Easy, see, easy.
Yes, yes.
Yes, next is Ms. Causey.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation, Dr. Williams and all. Thank you, Dr. Williams, for that presentation and for all the staff that's been working very diligently as these events continued to change. I apologize I missed the beginning of the presentation tonight, but I got to hear it twice on Friday with the schoolhouse and central office administrators and supervisors at their annual kickoff. But I may have missed the statement here tonight about the status of extracurriculars. You know, robotics and the clubs and as well as the sports, especially given the county executive state of emergency.
So I did not specifically say anything about extracurricular activities. We will proceed typically. The question, I think it was Ms. Rowe that asked, maybe it was Ms. Mack, I apologize, I can't remember who asked it, about the state of emergency. I just say, stay tuned, I don't have all the particulars regarding that and how that may impact our school. It's my understanding the county executive will be coming to the county council regarding the state of emergency. So one slide talked about the if then, so I would apply that. So if the county is deciding to move a certain direction, then we would have to look at how that may impact schools' extracurricular athletics.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had was about the 15 minutes per day. And in the survey, as you mentioned, that's been a longstanding issue where through three state superintendents, the guidance was to increase the day so that we would have equal instructional hours as the other districts in the state of Maryland. So I appreciate you bringing that, you know, that arrangement, that recommendation to the board and to get that funding. Because we know that the instructional time with the student, with the teacher is so impactful and especially after the pandemic, if we can squeeze in a few more minutes here and there. One other thing is as conditions improve, and we're all hopeful that with research and everything that's going on, that conditions will improve, then there could be, excuse me? Oh, lessening of strict mitigation. Is that correct or no one's talking about that yet?
No, I think those are conversations we have weekly. We yield to the health experts. Right now, they're talking about layering, layering these protections. If there's a need to go in the reverse, I'm pretty sure that will be the conversation.
Okay, great. And the last thing is about mask breaks. We had had a conversation about that and you said that that's going to be a schoolhouse issue where the principals are working with their, you know, with their.
I'm gonna invite the community superintendents to come up and respond to that. They have been working with our principals on a regular basis. I think there's some feelings about the mask, mask breaks that you're talking about.
Right, so a lot of parents and students have concerns about having the masks on without any breaks. And so that was one of the questions I had is how is that being handled by schoolhouse leaders?
It's time.
Thank you.
Go ahead, respond.
I'm sorry, sorry now, Ms. Causey. Our principals, Dr. Williams mentioned, our principals are working very closely with Ms. Somerville and with our health panel, one of our health experts. So when that question specifically comes up and a principal wants to look into that or wants to provide that opportunity, then that's something their first phone call is going to be to us or to Ms. Somerville directly. I'm sorry, now I can't provide a direct answer as to which principals which schools are asking. But certainly that is something with the layered mitigations. If that is something they feel they need to address with their school community, they're gonna work with our health office to see if that's tenable. If so, how, all aligned to the layered mitigation strategies that we have in place.
And Ms. Somerville, would you just talk about, we have been having conversations about masks being required when they're and where they could be recommended, that we're working on something for our public. Can you just talk a little bit more about that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So masks are required inside unless you're eating, obviously. It's hard to do with the masks that we know of so far. So, so the masks are required inside, there's obviously a mask break during meals. And then masks can be taken off as needed. To be honest, mask breaks are not something that we're gonna all say, let's have a mask break and we all de-mask because that would be kind of counterintuitive. It kind of unprotects all of us. But as long as the student is following the intention of the mask, which is I have to scratch my face and I put it back on carefully, ideally I would have washed my hands, then that's fine. And I think that's what we're trying to help our teachers understand. Is a mask break is a comfort break like anything else in a classroom. As long as it's not disruptive and creating hazard to others, it should be permitted. And that's something that we'll talk through with principals as they struggle with, you know, the mask is not plastered to your face, but it should be kept on to protect the student and the student's peers. Does that help?
Thank you. That helps a lot. And I also wanted to give a shout out for your new FAQs that are coming out on the website, so.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Mack.
Yes, Dr. Williams, I just wanted to say that I do support having students return to school in person to the extent that it continues to be safe to do so. And I do absolutely support not having concurrent teaching. My questions are this. Will we make any changes to how we cohort or pod students at each level, elementary school, middle school, high school throughout the day? Meaning on the bus, in the classroom, at lunch, at specials? To number one, minimize exposure and number two, help with contact tracing?
We're looking to Deb Somerville, good evening, everyone, because Deb has been an amazing support for not only our principals, but even our newly, and this very topic continues to come up. So we'll have Deb actually share some of the things we've been communicating in schools. So thanks, Deb. So what we're, the ideas we've talked about with cohorting on buses, we tried to assign seats last year and that worked in some of the elementary schools pretty well. But it was much more challenging with our teenagers. They don't really like to be told where to sit. So we thought that we would capitalize, excuse me, on.
I have one.
So, right, we would, we thought we would build on what we know to be human behavior, which is we tend to go to the same seat, right? We do tend to go to the same seat. We sit in that seat until something really changes and I stop liking Dr. Roberts and I move to. But anyhow, generally, so what we are gonna ask our school leaders to do is to early in the school year, get on the buses and identify, have the students say, let's pick our seats, boys and girls, for the next month. And the students pick a seat, the seats, Dr. Grimm has labeled our seats. So it's row one, row two, row three. And so then we will know which students are in row two, I'm a row two, I'm a row three. So that when we need to do contact tracing, we have the ability to identify the close contacts on the bus and so that the students don't mix regularly. They're gonna be in, ideally in those assigned seats.
How does, how is that gonna work for high school students who walk down the hall to change classes? Are we just?
So walking down the hall to change classes is not, you know, it's not a prolonged contact and not considered high risk.
I said that wrong. So A class, I'm in class with you guys, but in my B class, I'm in class with them.
And honestly, that's been instructurally necessary and that's something that, yes, I would love them to all be with the same students all day. But I've been told by the instructional leaders that that's not in our students' best interest, so.
No, no, and I'm not advocating for that, but I guess we will know where a student is. If a student tests positive, we will know that this morning he was with you guys.
Absolutely.
And this afternoon, he was with them.
Oh, absolutely. That's the contact tracing part, absolutely. I'm sorry, misunderstood.
But let me, I need to put a pause on that. The work that our nurses have to do and our health offices around the contact tracing is a task and it takes time and effort and working with our administrators. And so we've learned that when we started to bring back students, we've learned. But I just want to, that contact tracing is a long process and you gotta be very meticulous and you have to ask good questions. This is also a plug for, since you talked about secondary students, about the vaccinations. I want to encourage the vaccinations for those who are eligible. So I'm gonna just stop right there.
And my next question is probably gonna be for you, Ms. Somerville. So last year, we ended the year with universal masking, social distancing while masked of three feet and six feet of social distancing while unmasked. Are we making any changes to that starting next week?
The only change is the physical or social distancing is to the extent possible, to the maximum extent possible. So what CDC made very clear in their summer guidelines was that the priority needs to be on reopening schools. And so we are, our school leaders are stretching our students out as much as physically possible given the constraints of enrollment and the fixed walls of the building.
My last question for you is, in what situation, if any, do you anticipate that school nurses will be administering COVID tests to students?
So school nurses will be administering COVID tests to students with parent consent if a student is in school and develops symptoms of COVID. So it's going to be offered to parents if the parents want it as a service. And we'll offer rapid antigen tests and confirmatory PCRs if they request it.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. And then, Dr. Williams, my last question is, since our schoolhouse employees and our bus drivers are gonna be on the front line, I imagine that we're gonna offer them grace if they continue to contract COVID, even if they are vaccinated or in and out of school and unable to teach. Will we be counting absence against any of them?
So I don't know if you're, are you asking a disciplinary question or something?
I mean, are we gonna, you know, if a teacher through no fault of his or her own gets COVID three times, enough that he or she cannot teach virtually, are we gonna offer that teacher, bus driver, ESPBC person, grace?
I think we have provided grace to our staff, but your scenario, three times or four times? We have to ask the question, what's going on with that staff member? And really, and kind of help teach and say, something is going on. But as we did last year, we try to maintain all of our staff members because our kids need them. So we will continue to provide grace. But if there's some patterns, we still have to address behavior. We have to ask questions, for sure.
Okay, thank you. I'm finished. Thank you very much, especially you, Ms. Somerville.
Thank you. Were there any additional questions from board members?
There's one more.
Ms. Rowe?
Could you just outline what we're doing in school buildings as far as disinfecting the buildings themselves on a regular basis?
Okay, so Dr. Scriven, and I don't know, a community superintendent wants to start. We have been dealing with this since last year, but want to give some updates, Dr. Scriven.
So as Dr. Scriven comes forward, we continue to make sanitization and/or the cleaning of schools a priority as well and consider it to be a part of our. of schools a priority as well and consider it to be a part of our strategy to create safe and clean, clean spaces. So that approach has not changed at all. We definitely have a system and a process by which we do that, but I'll let you share.
No, I mean, you hit it. And we still are going to have two shifts. Our regular shifts are going to be in place and the priority is about sanitization. So that is on the forefront. There was a recent request to try to do an adjustment to schedule for Ask Me. It's no way. Students are coming back and our priority is making sure that we're providing them a safe environment. So that will continue to be the priority.
And our schools certainly have a supply of hand sanitizer, the wipes certainly through the Ed Foundation and what they carried over from last school year. That's one thing they're not lacking.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, team.
Thank you all. Okay, looks like the next item on the agenda are information items. Item P, it's the revised superintendent's rule 3231 and the Central Area Education Advisory Council meeting minutes of August 4th, 2021. Then we are at item Q. The next item on the agenda is board committee updates and board member comments, including proposed agenda items for future board meetings. And we will start with Ms. Row, Ms. Rowe, excuse me, Ms. Rowe.
I just want to welcome everyone back to the start of the school year, which starts in a few days. And I know that it's scary to return under the circumstances, but it's also exciting to return. And I know that all three of my children are excited to be, seeing their friends again and to see their teachers and staff. And so I'm grateful to all of our staff who have found ways to be able to make sure that we can return to school in person and to do that as safely as possible and to have mitigation strategies for when outbreaks happen, et cetera. And so I just wanted to say I appreciate the staff for doing that. And I'm sure that you all have worked extra hours and that this last year and a half has been extremely stressful for everyone. And so, you know, I'm still hopeful that this year we'll be able to stay in person.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Next is Ms. Causey.
Thank you. I just wanted to wish everyone a great start to this new school year. It is not the carefree, normal and easy start. We all hoped it would be, but I appreciate the commitment to maintaining in-person teaching and learning, which education leaders in our district and also at the state level really want for our children so that they can do the best that they can, that they can recover and they can heal and they can achieve, as we know that every child is capable of achieving. It is logical that we would be employing these layers of safety mitigations as the COVID impacts continue to change. But I am also hopeful that just as we, as a state and a country and the world have made progress against COVID, that we will continue to make progress and that there will be a time when we won't necessarily have to wear these masks and be socially distanced. So while it is important to be, in my opinion, concerned and acting prudently, it's also a time to be hopeful and it's also a time to really be grateful for what we are able to do for our children this year that we were not able to do for the last 18 months. And I'm looking at Christian, who, you know, hopefully is going to get a straight through 180 days of a senior year, like we're wishing for so many, so many seniors, all of our seniors this year. I appreciate the conversation of my colleagues on the board this evening and of staff. We've covered a lot of very important issues and there will be continued discussions. It is important, I feel, to really appreciate everyone's perspective and their experience as we grapple with all of these tough decisions that we have in front of us. So I will be just continuing to work hard to do my part on the board to serve the children and the staff and the families of Baltimore County Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Causey. Next is Ms. Mack.
St. Francis of Assisi said, start by doing what's necessary, then do what's possible, and suddenly you are doing the impossible. To all BCPS personnel, you consistently do what's necessary, what's possible, and of late, even what is impossible. So I just wanted to say I thank all of you and I wish all of us the best year ever.
Thank you, Ms. Mack. Next is Mr. McMillian.
I'm going to combine my board comments and my committee update. The audit committee will meet on Tuesday, September 21st from 4:30 to 6 o'clock, and I do not have any recommendations for the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillian. Ms. Choos?
Thank you. No committee updates for the building and contracts. I want to wish all of our teachers and students the best as we get ready for a new school year in less than a week. Also want to thank staff and Team BCPS for everything you do. I know it's been hard, so good luck and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Choos. Next is Ms. Hen.
Thank you. No committee updates for the budget committee. I also would like to welcome our staff and educators back and look forward to welcoming our students back and want to encourage everyone to please take care of yourselves, please stay connected with the board. We are concerned for you and your well-being and just please stay in touch, tell us how we can help you and really want to make this year the best it can be and appreciate all of you and your service and hope to make this a great year. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. Next, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. I want to start off by actually thanking Ms. Scott for chairing this board and for really putting in the effort that she has over the past almost year now to really make our board great. I was on vacation last week, but I was reading Robert's Rules of Order on the beach and I was seeing the type of work that goes into being the board chair. And so I just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Scott and everything that she's done for this board, her continued support of all students in BCPS. I had a great welcome to the curriculum committee last meeting, so I just want to thank all the curriculum committee members and Ms. Pastore, as well as Dr. McComas for that great meeting. I want to say that the Pfizer vaccine is officially FDA approved, so fellow students who can get vaccinated, we need to get vaccinated. I'm wishing all students a great year and a fantastic year to my fellow students. And lastly, I want to send my condolences to the family of a recently deceased former teacher of mine from St. Mary's Run Middle. Yesterday, she passed away after battling cancer. Her name was Ms. Vicki Hicks. And I had the pleasure of being in her class in her GT English 8 course about four years ago, and she honestly did change my life. So I just want to send all my love to St. Mary's Run, to my community and to her family. She was truly an amazing teacher and had an impact on everyone who walked through her classroom. And so I just wanted to take some time to thank her. So, sorry. That concludes my board comments and I hope everyone has a fantastic night.
Thank you, Christian. Next is Mr. Offerman.
Yes, I want to thank not only all the staff, but also the students and parents who have had to put up with so many challenges and so many and vast majority of them have done, they've gone above and beyond the call. And that's what makes a really good school system. Everybody working together and everybody working hard and everybody understanding that they're not always going to get everything they want, but understand that our job is to do the best we can with the resources we have and to keep us informed of what their concerns are, but also to understand that we really need to focus on the good, the greatest good for the greatest number of students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Offerman. Next is Ms. Pastore.
No committee updates, but I do want to thank, as Mr. Offerman said, parents and students and the teachers, everyone who have gone through this horrendous year. And I'm looking forward to something new and better this year. And to that end, I really want to thank Dr. McComas and the CNI staff for the work that you've been doing. Dr. Yarborough, I'm psychic, so I know the work that you're doing to make sure that the system under Dr. Williams's auspices will certainly move forward and we are going to be about exemplary work and the work that schools are to be about and not to come back as those who have fallen apart and scraping, that we're coming back with an instructional and educational vengeance. So thank you for the work that I know you've been doing and I'm looking forward to seeing how it's all going to come together and make excellence truly happen for this system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pastore. Next is Dr. Hager.
I just want to thank Dr. Williams and his staff for the discussion we just had on reopening. We really appreciate everyone's time in answering all of our questions and I appreciate everyone staying a little later to make that happen. I really liked what one of the public commenters said earlier that will require us to think about the we and not the me as we get back to the school year. I do think it will require a lot of teamwork and working together and I'm excited because I feel like that's the vibe I feel in the room, that that's what we're headed towards as a school system. And so I'm looking forward to a somewhat normal school year for our kids and I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's done to make that happen. I do have a potential topic for maybe Dr. Williams to add when he talks about, if in your superintendent comments, you continue to talk about opening of schools, the next time we meet, even though schools will already be open. And that will have to do with school meals. So most people know that that's something that I think about a lot in my day job. And we heard last board meeting that there will be universal breakfasts and lunches offered to kids. That's a federal effort, so not within our school system, but kids across the country will be getting universal meals this whole school year. And it's going to follow the regular school meal pattern, so the meals will look a lot different than they did last year. So if you're a parent and you were like, I don't know about the meals last year, trust me, this year they're going to be amazing and lunch and they're going to be free, which is really exciting. So I think if we could incorporate that potentially, it doesn't have to be a whole agenda topic, but maybe a slide or two just about what those meals look like and why everybody should be getting their free meal when they go to school. I would really appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Hager. Next is Mr. Kuhn.
All right, I'll attempt to be brief. I just want to speak to the parents of all the children that are going to, wherever they're going, school-wise, from kindergarten through college. There's a lot of anxiety out there that we're all dealing with, parents down to the children and a lot of excitement. And I believe, and I hope that you can believe, that everybody here is dedicated to providing a safe environment for your children to flourish in. And that's what we're here for and that's what we're going to try and do. And, you know, we're all focused on making all that happen. So here's to the new school year that's starting in a few days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. And next is me, and I would just like to say that I'm looking forward to school starting and everybody going back and being able to be in classrooms and see their teachers. I think that's going to be wonderful. I'm hopeful that everything will go well. And I'd like everybody to know that we're doing our best here to work with the superintendent and staff so that when we open, we stay open. I would also like to thank all of board members for all of your hard work and everything that you have done to get us here, as well as the civility code. I think that's a wonderful step for us as a board, our commitment to our governing of ourselves and our behavior, and I think that that's a great step forward. So I don't have any committee updates and that's it for me. Thank you. So now we are on to item R. The last item on the agenda is announcements. The board's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. I thank you for joining us and the meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you, Dr. Scriven.